I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, January 27, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Aruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Roderick.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, January 13, 2014. Receipt of minutes of the following boards and commissions: Open Space Commission Six, Library Board of Trustees, Recreation Commission. Correspondence received and filed. Exeter Town Council requests support for Newport-Pell Bridge safety resolution. Charles Town Town Council, resolution opposing the opening of the Charro Act for Revision. Approval of the tax accessory abatements. Andre Go-Due request for handicap parking sign for 23 Clement Street referred to Police Chief and DPW director and Police Chief recommendation. Approval of proclamation for James Weir recommended by Economic Development Commission. Denise Searle Treasurer, distribution of the 2013 budget and revenue reports. Anything to remove?
Mr. President, I'd like to remove CA 2C.
Okay, I would like to remove CA 1 and CA 6. Anything else? I will entertain a motion regarding the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Beginning with CA 1, the minutes are still in draft form and have been completed. They will be on our next agenda. Okay. Mr. Aruda.
I just had a quick question for 2C. I was reading these minutes for the Recreation Committee. And forgive me if I may have missed previous minute states, but this was dated almost a year ago.
I know.
So are they getting caught up on submission of their minutes or?
This is a result of us sending out memos when we couldn't match agendas to minutes. So, yes, they've sent out the minutes since then, but that was a probably a missing.
Okay. That was all, just making sure we weren't getting some updates.
Okay, all right. We'll entertain a motion on CA 2C.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, CA 5. We have a proclamation in honor of James R. Weir.
CA 6.
Whereas, I'm sorry, CA 6. Did I say 5? Sorry. 6. Whereas James R. Weir, architect and preservationist, passed away on November 16, 2013, at the age of 71. Whereas Mr. Weir devoted more than 30 years of his life to the restoration and renovation of the historic Tiverton Four Corners. Whereas Mr. Weir's many accomplishments include service in the Peace Corps in Tunisia, the founding of Farm Coast, extensive involvement in town and regional affairs, and the adaptive reuse of many historical structures in the town of Tiverton. Whereas through the adapted reuse of historic structures, a vibrant community of artists, artisans, retailers, and professional service providers has been created allowing for the preservation of the Tiverton Four Corners. Whereas Mr. Weir was responsible for establishing a new standard for economic sustainability in Tiverton, once stating that "the route to sustainability lies in making the properties economically more viable." Whereas economic development and historic preservation have come together at Four Corners to create a valuable asset for all the citizens of the town of Tiverton. Whereas Mr. Weir's stewardship of this fine asset will be greatly missed. Therefore, be it resolved that every official and citizen of the town of Tiverton extend to his family and friends of James R. Weir their sincerest condolences. Furthermore, the Tiverton Town Council hereby pledges to honor the memory of Mr. Weir through their careful stewardship of Tiverton Four Corners. Signed by my hand, Edouard A. Roderick, President, Tiverton Town Council.
I move that we approve the proclamation for James R. Weir recommended by the Economic Development Commission. As read.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is Mr. Humphries here?
I didn't see him.
No. Okay. Okay, we're going to...
Mr. President, just a quick question. I don't believe the delegates are on the... Oh, good. Never mind. Step ahead of me.
Yes, you are. Yeah, I will entertain a motion to add to our agenda. Our state legislators.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to welcome our delegation.
Just for the record, for discussion only.
For discussion only, unless they have a check.
We didn't bring any money tonight. It wasn't on the bill.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Evening. Who would like to begin?
What would you like us to talk about?
Well, I think first of all and foremost, the update on our beautiful structure that hangs over the Saginaw River.
Well, you're fortunate you have three members of the commission who are also part of your delegation. So we worked pretty hard the last six months or so. And we have, the commission is over, we have findings of fact, and we are using those findings of fact to come up with legislation, to fund our infrastructure, and keep the toll off this kind of a bridge at the same time. Our main goal has been consistently to keep the toll off this kind of a bridge.
Again, we never know how the legislature is going to go, but do we presume that it will be completed before their April 1st where they can raise?
No, I don't. I expect that we'll have to have piece of legislation that will extend the date to July 1st. Because our goal is to have whatever legislation we bring forward to have it included in the budget.
Okay.
Otherwise, you have the governor has the ability to veto a single bill.
Okay. All right, okay. Anything else from the council?
I was, well, thank you for being here. I would just be curious if there's any other legislation coming up in this particular session that you think might be of interest or important, aside from the bridge, to the town of Tiverton at all, that we may want to help review or provide additional input on?
They just started submitting bills to the legislators, so we're all, we're very new into the Senate, so we can't guess what's going to happen next week. Another rep will put in a bill, another senator will put in a bill. So we don't know that yet, but to this point, no.
Actually, there is, we have a bill in.
Oh, that's right.
Mary and I have a bill in, and we are waiting for our Senate members to bring it forward. It is to have the match for Tiverton increase from 30% to 40% for the school funding.
That's correct.
We've put that in for the last few years. That would be a net gain of about $265,000 to the town if that were to happen. So when that bill goes before House Finance, we would really appreciate not just a resolution from the council, we'd really appreciate one of the, one or two of the council members to come to the hearing and plead the case for Tiverton.
Absolutely.
It's no win.
Mr. President?
We will.
I just have, have one comment, and it's based on some of the newspaper reports of the past week. I know every, you five gentlemen are doing the best you can there in Providence, but I would again, on behalf of the citizens here in Tiverton, urge you to do whatever you can do to try to turn around the financial picture in this state. This week, it was reported that we now have managed somehow to beat out the state of Nevada, and we have the highest unemployment in the country as a state. The Department of Labor says it's 9.1. People who give a different definition to unemployment would suggest that the unemployment in Rhode Island is now 16.5%. It's absolutely outrageous. We seem every year to win every survey as being the worst state in the country to do business. I have nothing to do with those surveys, but we seem to win every one of those surveys. And I have nothing to, and this is an issue that Mr. Edwards and I compare notes on every once in a while, and that is the number of people in Rhode Island who vote with their feet. Jay, for the fourth out of, the last five years, as you know, Rhode Island has lost more of its population than any state in the country, four of the five last years, on a per capita basis. We managed somehow to beat out states like Nevada, West Virginia, Michigan. I don't know how we do it, but we've managed to keep that record at least for four out of the five last years. And I'm sure it all points to the financial mess that we have in this state. So I would again urge you on behalf of the citizens of Tiverton to do whatever you can do to get some industrial and commercial development into this state. Thank you.
If maybe, is we, you know, we have some members of leadership here. I know in the Senate last week, there was a very, I think, a good proactive grouping of discussion over creating jobs, and it called the Road to Work, which is the predecessor to some legislation that's going to come out. And again, I don't want to steal all the thunder, but that the whole idea is that it's designed to focus on the one big issue we have here, that matching the unemployment numbers versus the supply of skilled labor. And by skilled, I mean at virtually every level. We have the building and trades, which need more people involved in the skills necessary to fill the jobs that are available. So I think there's some work being done on that. Clearly, I think there's going to be a bigger debate, as you see already evolving politically in terms of what's best for the business climate, in terms of increasing minimum wages or changing other job environment things. But I think there's a lot of focus placed on addressing the unemployment issue.
Couple of items I'll mention from what I just said in perspective that are, I'll say pertinent to Tiverton, both at macro level and micro level. From a micro level perspective, you folks have been dealing with for about, I think when Jay was on the council, so that was a few years ago, an issue with agricultural composting facility.
Yes.
That legislation was submitted two years ago. It's been resubmitted on the Senate side. I think Jay will be, will be submitting it on the House side. We have more sponsors this year than we have in the past to seek to put into statute and codify in Rhode Island general law what is a policy and procedure that BEM should be following and didn't follow. To try and make it such a place that it won't help Tiverton now, but had it been in place, it would have, it will help other communities, but unfortunately, folks have had to go through that and should have manifested itself again in the future, this would be a way to codify that piece. The other piece would be the, and it was in last year's budget for the first time, this one Senate aid package that the governor had put forward last year to, as an incentive to encourage cities and towns to begin to meet their annual required contributions for pensions. This year, I believe, Tiverton stands to gain about $74,000. Because of that, that's in the FY group. In this next fiscal year, it's like FY 15, and you're probably familiar with what transpired recently. So people say, oh, everybody gets that? Well, they don't. The town of Coventry chose not to meet, didn't meet the criteria, so their money will be apportioned to all the cities and towns that did. So you should expect to get a few more nickels. There won't be a lot of money, but a few more nickels should come the way of Tiverton percentage-wise across the state because the town of Coventry did not meet their numbers, and they were not getting the money for this current fiscal year. So that's a, another piece of it. Last piece associated with, as Jay mentioned earlier, about housing aid, housing and library aid, the moratorium. The General Assembly does nothing this year, will cease, so the ability for housing aid to be, to reapply for housing aid, or wherever it is, will become available again this year because the moratorium will set the sunset in this next fiscal year.
Okay, good. Yes.
Mr. President, in regards to Counselor Lambert's statement, one bill that I did put in this year was to look at how we tax retirement pensions. You had mentioned in terms of people moving out of state and moving to more tax-friendly states. The bill, the legislation that I submitted, and Representative Edwards signed on to it as well as a co-sponsor, would, my goal is to make this a more retirement-friendly state so that we either eliminate the taxes or reduce the taxes, so people will actually stay here and have, and maybe even want to move here because we're a tax-friendly state. And so that's a piece of legislation I just submitted as well.
And I want to congratulate you on that. That's exactly the type of thinking I want, because I've reached the age where I have relatives, for example, just, well, I'm at the age where I have friends, I have relatives, and I've actually suggested to, I can think of a couple of cousins right now that I've suggested, gee, you're retiring, you're in Massachusetts, why don't you move to Rhode Island? The answer right away is, we can't afford the taxes. We can't afford to move to the state of Rhode Island.
Well, if you look at Kiplinger's report, you know, we are one of the least tax-friendly states in terms of retirement. And, and that's why I submitted that bill, because we want our retired folks to stay here and live here, spend their dollars here, and enjoy the state at, you know, at a reasonable, you know, reasonable taxes. And that was my, you know, I wanted to think out of the box, think statewide, and stop, stop the older people from moving out, give them a reason to stay.
Well, let me, let me be a skunk in a robe. I've submitted that bill the last six years, similar type bill, and every year I try to make it easier and easier on the, one time it was all the military retirement monies. And the latest version, I believe, I put in last year was 65 or over you had to be to have that exemption. And my train of thought is the same way as the reps here, is that we need to be keeping our elderly within our community here. And that's why for the last six, seven years, I've put an increase in the estate tax, the debt tax, to keep individuals here from the $910,000 to 1.5 million. To see some progress here. Another bill I've been trying to put in the last four, five years is the gas tax, decreasing it by five cents. And everybody says, well, what does five cents do? Well, five cents does a lot. It keeps people staying in Rhode Island purchasing the gas than going over to Massachusetts, which has a compounding effect in terms of not only buying gas, but you're buying lottery tickets there, you're buying refreshments there and others. So, you know, people don't understand that because the past four months, I've been on the commission and studying the sales tax to decrease the tax from 6% to zero, which is highly unlikely, but there are areas that we looked at that we feel that we can make ourselves more competitive. And that's one case is for businesses that are taxed on electricity and the heat when they shouldn't be taxed on that. It's a small amount, but almost about $20 million in terms of the impact on businesses. So we are looking at the businesses and looking at ways, it's just to get our leadership and anybody on board to see it the way we see it in suburbia and downtown.
Thank you, Senator. You know, and again, speaking, you know, in regards to, you know, sales tax and those types of things, I think especially those of us who are on the border are greatly impacted by that. And, you know, Tiverton, for one, you know, we've tried in businesses, I'm moving into town, we, you know, we've had some small growth and we hope to have more, but it's very tough to compete when two minutes, not even 10 minutes, two minutes, you're in Massachusetts and you can get everything at lower tax rates or no tax. So, you know, it's something that I hope you all take under consideration and do the best, as I know you all will, you know, for, not only for Tiverton, but for the whole state. Anything else from?
Can I ask you guys a question?
Yes, sir.
How's that mole project done? I know you're not directly involved.
It's still, it's still moving along.
Still in play?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there any movement with the industrial park?
It depends on what you want to call movement.
It's still there.
It's still there.
It's still there. Coming to it.
Not as.
It's, it's one of the things that we're going to look at again and see what we need to do to get more interest in that.
I think one thing that we should speak about, and just to give you a general flavor, when you're talking about specific legislation, potentially our legislation is filed between now and the middle of February, the major pieces of legislation. From there, the individual chairs of those particular committees that it's assigned to start to categorize those into light-type legislation, and then begin having hearings on those the end of February to the beginning of April, at which time they'll begin that process of starting to approve those particular bills. And that's why it's really important and imperative to have a bill on the House side and a bill on the Senate side, so that process can go through both chambers. Now, after April vacation, there's usually a, an approval cycle starts getting hearings on the other side, the other chamber. And then from there, we start to look at all the bills in June and early. And the point aspect from the financial perspective is that we start to call in our department heads and start to review those financial implication of legislation from now till probably the middle of May, when we get our final results of our May revenue estimating conference. By that, I mean it'll estimate all our particular revenues, and then from there, we'll know where our budget stands in terms of what programs we can implement and what programs we can't.
Okay.
Is there any legislation you as a council push this year, or any particular piece under you need?
I know from my perspective, I am a liaison to the Tiverton Prevention Coalition, and there's some modifications that I believe the AG's office will want to make to the marijuana, medical marijuana legislation. I would be in support of those efforts to approve that. It just needs some fine tuning, and I think the AG is on the right track, if you could keep that in mind.
I spoke to, well, Rebecca Howell and Ray Davis in Portsmouth on that issue, so I've been talking back and forth with Josh Miller, who was the co-sponsor on the Senate side. There's some, I know there's some modifications they want.
Yep, just some tweaks. Thank you.
Mr. Tights?
Well, I was just going to, we have later on the agenda the question about the wastewater management district.
Yes, yeah, the sewer district.
Depending on what the council does, we'd be looking for enabling, might be looking for enabling legislation to create a separate wastewater management district.
Anything else from the council? You know, again, you know, we rely on, on our delegation, and I've lived in other parts of the state, so I can honestly say this, I think you guys are the hardest working legislators that I've ever seen. You show up, you, you back us, you help not only, you know, Tiverton, but Portsmouth and Warren, Bristol and Middletown and everywhere else along the way. And we rely on you to be our eyes and ears at the State House. And for far too long, we in Tiverton have always felt as the stepchild to the rest of the state. So we, we appreciate your endeavors and hope that you will continue to work diligently for us. And as I look at each one of you, I know that two months from now, I can say there will be no toll on the Saginaw Bridge.
Well, I was going to say affirm is that the legislature worked very diligently a few years ago regarding the reimbursement money for the libraries.
Yes.
And, and that was a major victory, not only for the library association, but for the town of Tiverton, that we were able to secure the funds prior to the moratorium.
Great. Thank you, I appreciate it. And the town appreciates all your support. Thank you. Okay. The open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Jeff Bellin?
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak. Well, one thing I'd like to bring up tonight is, many of you have already seen, we've had two snowstorms, and two major snowstorms, and the one thing that I've seen, especially living in, you know, this town, since we spent a million dollars to put the new road in on Main Road as well as the nice sidewalks, is when we have a major snowstorm, those sidewalks disappear. They disappear because all the snow is covering them. And then what happens is when people go to walk, they're back, they're back walking in the street. And what I have seen in the past couple of days, and everybody probably on the council has already read, there's already been two deaths in Newport from either in a pedestrian crosswalk, or I don't know what the situation was with the other traffic, you know, pedestrian fatality in Newport. What I do, would not like to see is that same instance happen here where somebody's trying to walk, you know, either walk their dog or what have you, the sidewalks are covered. I know the city of Newport has an ordinance that is strictly enforced, that during a snowstorm, it is the owner's responsibility, if the sidewalk passes in front of your house, you have so much time to clear it. If you're not, you're fined. I would like to see something like that in Tiverton, you know, not so much as far as the fines, but at least let the people know, you know, let's try to keep these sidewalks clear so people can walk. It's not, you know, I'm not trying to be, you know, a pain over, it's just more of a public safety thing, because, you know, a lot of people do like to get out and walk to state, you know, to exercise, myself included, I don't use the sidewalks much, but, you know, I do not want to see somebody get hurt, you know, I don't, I haven't talked to the police chief or the fire chief if there has been any incidents where somebody has been hurt on Main Road. It's just, I really don't want to, don't want to see it, and I think that the council should do something before somebody does get, get hurt. If I can, the other issue that I brought up, I've already spoke with you, Mr. Roderick, the council does not, I understand that you're already, you're discussing it, you know, there is certain issues you cannot discuss in the open. Myself, as a member of the community, would like to just get to the council so you can kind of feel where the people are coming from. The instance that came up that was reported by Channel 10, that did give the town a black eye. I was here the other night during, you know, when you went to the executive session about that instance. I'm not asking you to disclose anything, because I do know the matter of security, you know, security and keeping stuff for, you know, because you don't want to comment on it, I understand that. But the townspeople do want to know what is going on as soon as possible. There are certain speculations being made about backroom deals and everything. I feel, you know, what the council should do, you know, they have to do, but do it legally, so we do not have any lawsuits. Thank you.
Robert Pelletier, update Channel 6, my town.
On a positive note, we spent four hours with Channel 6 last Thursday, which was a tremendously cold day, and we came out shining. We highlighted the town. Gary Plunkett was very kind to take them out, the crew up to Fort Barton, and with the newly fallen snow, we saw nothing but the best of Tiverton. And boy, was it cold. And I think if a British had come with a hot toddy of rum, everybody would have sold out, but it was great. We gave pretty much South Tiverton. We went to, you know, the regular Fort Barton Gray, Four Corners, we went to Fogland and just happened to catch a car hugger who had broken down, pulled his boat invaders across the beach. I mean, what an iconic photo op. So I think it all went very, very well. They went to the library where that was open for them, and it just, they were very impressed with Tiverton, they took a lot of pictures. It will be aired on February 13th on the 5PM newscast, and maybe we can announce it some other time also. They asked about new, less historic venues in town, and for lack of anything else, we took, I took them down to the boat ramp beneath the Saginaw River Bridge, which they really liked. They asked when it will be finished, so today I went down there and said that, and I was told that they were waiting for the asphalt pits to open up to do the final paving. So it definitely, as soon as the weather turns, it'll be done. We're open for business, and hopefully, as we heard, we do need to generate some sort of revenues, and I think it went well.
Okay.
Everybody was afraid, but it went well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Odell?
Good evening, Jim Odell, Warren Avenue. I have several... I have several things I'd like to touch on briefly. Our town is in the news a lot. It started late last year. It's progressed into our administrator issue. It's morphed into our maintenance foreman issue. We have the Cynthia Avenue issue. We have a lot of issues in town that are making us look bad. I guess what I'm getting at is some of the issues in town need to be settled. They need to be settled correctly. They need to be settled honorably. They need to be settled. I wasn't a fan of allowing our administrator to retire. I do applaud the fact that you folks allowed the residents of Cynthia Ave to at least have a usable, passable road for the winter. I give a lot of credit for that. The Bob Martin issue, which I know you folks can't speak of, all I want to know is when is it going to be clarified? There are a lot of reports by a lot of media, the Fall River Herald, the Newport Daily News, even that little rag, what do they call it, Patch? Even they had something on it. We just need to settle the issues. We need to settle them properly. We need to settle them honorably. We need to stop giving Tiverton a black eye. We're running out of eyes. Thank you.
Public hearings and public presentations. Mr. Leroy Kendricks, draft legislation wastewater district charter.
We come before you tonight having an article before you, the draft legislation for the enabling legislation for the formation of a wastewater district, Tiverton Wastewater District. And just to take a step back, the background on this again, is we did a facilities plan last year, and as a recommendation of that facilities plan, it was noted that in order for us to secure the most favorable financing that would be the most favorable to our residents, and that's financing with USDA, we needed to form an entity that had a population under 10,000 and had met other criteria so that we could qualify for the funding. So, in order for us to do that, we put, well, you guys approved us to hire a consultant to do draft legislation for us to form the Tiverton Wastewater District. That person was Steve Levy here with Atlantic State Rural Water Association. And so, he has drafted that. It is the document that's before you. We've had Andy Tights, the town solicitor, review it. We've made contact with Jay Edwards, and he has agreed to sponsor it upon approval by the town council. And so, tonight, we would like to have, I'd like to have Steve Levy give a brief presentation on what's in the document and then open it up to any questions that you might have. Steve?
Good evening. My name is Steve Levy. I'm executive director of the Atlantic State Rural Water Association. We have before you a, probably a 20-page document, which I have no intention of discussing all the words, probably you don't have any intention of reading all the words. I was engaged to help you qualify for USDA rural development grant money. And long story short, there is an excellent program within United States Private Back Culture Rural Development that is available to fund water and wastewater systems with that, the G word, which is grant money. And unfortunately, they have certain guidelines as to who's eligible and who's not eligible. One of the guidelines is population. And by their program, since they are rural, I don't think they know what really rural is, rural is under 10,000. So, they suggested that if you, we, together, were to create a special government entity with a population of under 10,000, under 10,000 population, then they would entertain an application, you know, from you to improve the collection system in Tiverton. And, you know, I've heard you talk tonight about economic development, about the need for jobs, all of these are important features. I think if we together are able to get up to 45% grant, and the other benefit of the programs is that they can amortize a loan for over 40 years. So, if you have more grant money and a longer amortization period, it makes a very, very important and necessary project more affordable to the rate payers, more affordable, you know, to the customers, and also will be an economic stimulus. So, what I tried to do in this legislation is to maintain all of the current powers and authorities that the town has, that the Wastewater Management Commission has, and sort of take them out of your ordinance and stick them into a piece of legislation. I assure you, it was not an easy task. I mean, right now, you are a government entity, you have appointed a seven man Burck Commission who does a very nice job managing a, you know, a good wastewater system. The problem is that they're not going to be eligible for the grant money. So, I have, to the extent that I could, by the way, there is no model sewer district legislation. There, in fact, there's only one sewer district in the state of Rhode Island, which isn't even a sewer district. So, what I did was, I hate to admit it, I borrowed it from many other pieces of legislation. And so, again, what I did, some of it looks like against a Bay Commission and some actually looks like a water district. And what I've done is probably together, worked with the commission to maintain all of the responsibilities, all of the roles, all of the services that you currently have. You know, we're going to take it from one entity and put it into a separate district. So, that's basically what the document has done. To the extent that I could, I took your current ordinances and I put them within the powers of this newly created district. So, you have a long, cumbersome, odd sort of ordinance, it's what everyone else has. So, I took those features out of the ordinance and I put it within the powers. The other thing is that we talked about governance as to who's going to run this, you know, wastewater district, assuming that everyone is happy with it. So, what I suggested in this document, it is still a working document, is that I suggested that the town council would appoint the current trustees of this district to be the directors of the newly formed wastewater district. They would maintain their current status as far as staggering, I can't think of the word. Thank you. They would, in staggered terms, they would each get a one-year extension because what I think is most important is that there's continuity between one entity and the next. So, my suggestion is you would appoint the entire commission, they would get one year, and that thereafter, the directors of this wastewater district would be elected at an annual meeting held by the wastewater district. It's complicated, but it's not. One of the interesting things, as I got into it, is that assuming that you like this concept, assuming it gets passed by the legislature and assuming this organization gets created, we are probably going to have, I'll have to talk to Andy, we're probably going to have to come back and rework your sewer ordinance because it will no longer be valid. So, this, I view this as a two-step, as a two-step process. Again, the advantages for doing this are the availability of grant money, a longer amortization period over 40 years. As a sidelight, very often, rural development will turn back grant money to USDA from the state of Rhode Island, which makes me crazy. And they're anxious to do business with Tiverton, they love the idea of this project, they want a place to spend their money. And I've worked with some of the water districts in Tiverton also to a good effect to get grant money to improve the water system. So, it's sort of a track record. The other thing which is interesting is that within Tiverton, there is a census designated place. In other words, in the census, there is a place on your map that is sort of the core village of your town. Coincidentally, and we love it when we're lucky, coincidentally, that almost lines up uniformly with the current service area of the wastewater management district. So, in fact, what we're seeing in the legislation is this district will be the, will be this census designated place, additionally, which is coincidentally, which is coincidentally under 10,000 population. However, the district will have the authority to serve people outside of the district, they'll be able to do business outside, and so that no one will lose service. So, I think that's as quickly as I can run through it.
I think there's a couple of features that I would like to emphasize, a couple of things. The first of which is the Tiverton Wastewater District will cover just a certain portion of Tiverton, and that portion would be the area best served by sewers. But we propose in the legislation that the Tiverton Wastewater District would be responsible for wastewater throughout the town, just like the Tiverton Wastewater Commission is right now. So, those areas outside of, outside the district that have onsite systems, we would, at the pleasure of the town, still serve those people. You would continue, the town would continue to pay a portion of the cost for those onsite services, but the Tiverton Wastewater District would continue to take care of wastewater. Now, that would also mean, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands, that the town would have to deed all of the assets over to the Tiverton, the new district. So, that means all the pump stations, all the pipe, the L account, and all that would come over with it because we would, we would start the district immediately with the sewer users now. So, come time that the legislation would pass, all of the approximately 500 or so users that we have now would instantly become part of the district and we would continue to serve them. And so, there's, you know, so along with approving this legislation, you basically would approve that, yes, we're going to give them all the assets and they're going to be totally responsible for wastewater for the town and we'll just pay a fee for the onsite service for outside the district and that's pretty much it. And so, we anticipate that if this were to start, say July 1, beginning of the next fiscal year, then we would basically be on our own at that point in time. And that's, that's the anticipated start date, regardless of, you know, if the, when the legislation is passed, we would want to keep going into the fiscal year and then make a clean, clean break July 1, so. So, I'll open it up to any questions.
Mr. Gerlach?
Thank you. I did read every single word in here. And I have 13 questions, just to kind of lay it out there.
Yeah, well, I better get my pen ready.
Okay. And then I'll come back to what Mr. Kendricks kind of mentioned. And actually, it was your comment, Mr. Kendricks, which kind of leads my first question, which is section four on page two, which talks about, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, section seven, subsection 10 on page three, which talks about the power to acquire, contract to acquire from any person, firm, corporation, municipality, so on and so forth. What can you anticipate needing to acquire from personal property in order to make this happen? I'm curious as to what would need to be acquired from a personal, from a citizen in town. I mean, Mr. Kendricks, you just talked about needing to take over the assets to manage the broader, I guess wastewater function within the town. And so, that's, that's a whole nother issue that I need to better understand the benefit to the town for that. But from a personal property perspective, what do you anticipate needing to acquire?
Mr. Gerlach, if you turn back to page two, remember, this is, this is legalese and this would be some of the language which, pardon the expression, I borrowed from other curbers.
Sure.
Number seven. Basically, when they're talking about personal property, they're talking about machinery, equipment, transportation equipment, pipelines, tools, et cetera. So, it's more, it's more the physical assets and that's sort of the legal definition, you have an attorney there, but that's what they're referring back to.
Okay.
That's a good question and I'm delighted I could answer it.
So, section seven, maybe, maybe that's a trend we'll have throughout all of these. So, section seven, subsection 12, which is at the top of page four, says the power to continue serving all existing customer, customers within the town of Tiverton and the city of Fall River. Perhaps I forget this, but where does, I know that we're sending the material to Fall River, but are there physical customers in Fall River?
Well, there aren't now, but Fall River is looking to grab a piece of their property and they would like to use our, our pipes to convey that sewage ultimately to their system.
Okay.
So, there may be some Fall River customers paying us or having some kind of in-kind services in order to convey their waste through, through our system.
Okay.
And to continue on, only because again, I know the answer, there are also customers who are outside of the district, and I wanted to make sure that it's clear in the legislation that everyone will, will continue to get service.
Outside the district, but still within the bounds of Tiverton.
That's correct. Again, what I tried to do is make it as broad as possible to be as permissive as possible so to sort of envision eventualities so that we wouldn't have to go back to the legislature to deal with it.
So, that area is Country View Estates area. That's not defined within the district, but they're existing customers and so we'll continue to serve them.
Okay. My next question is section nine, subsection three, costs. You talk about costs, all costs and expense.
Can you give me a page?
Sure, yeah, middle of page five. All costs and expense incident to the installation and connections of the building sewer shall be borne by the owner. When you say owner, can you clarify, are we talking about the homeowner, the building owner?
Well, that's, generally, when we get financing on projects like this, certain financing will only cover the, the public part of the, the project. And a lot of times, they'll go to the owner and say, well, you know, you'll have to hire a contractor to hook yourself up or whatever. What we're going to attempt to do on, on the project, just so that it's easier for everyone, is to try to, to get the financing and contracting arranged so that it'll be one installation with the permission of the homeowner to go ahead and just hook them up so that the homeowner doesn't have to mess around with financing. Now, that's a, that's a hope, but ultimately, all the costs are going to be, you know, put into a, an assessment, a monthly assessment. So, it'll all be eventually borne by the homeowner anyway.
Okay.
And Mr. Gerlach, this, this language is in your ordinance right now, this is some of the language that I borrowed.
Okay, great. Actually, if we go up to the top of page five, section eight, last sentence, "It shall be unlawful to discharge to any natural and mainmade outlet within the town any wastewater or other polluted waters except where in accordance with the subsequent provisions of this chapter." Forgive me, but does this basically make it illegal to use a septic system if you're in the, okay.
No.
Okay.
No, we.
If you're in, within the district.
No, I mean, I think that we've defined the district as an area, but ultimately, people who want to join the sewer part of the district will vote on that. And if they vote not to and they have septic systems, then they'll continue to have septic systems.
Okay.
Those septic systems will have to obviously meet standards, but it doesn't preclude having a septic system in the, in the district area.
Okay, okay, thank you. Section 17, subsection one at the top of page seven, inspection powers. So, it says inspections shall be conducted at the discretion So it says, "Inspections shall be conducted at the discretion of the town, the town or duly, or the duly authorized employees and agents of the town upon presenting identification and appropriate credentials is authorized." So inspections of what exactly are we talking about there?
Well, that's some of the language that's gotta be cleaned up, because that wouldn't be by the town, that'd be by the district.
Because that's leading me to my next question, because I thought that was gonna be the district's responsibility.
That'll be the district's responsibility.
All right.
Thank you for the catch, sir.
That was, that was an easy one. Okay, section 22, the kinda content on the top of page 10, where we're talking about taxes, taxes assessments, penalty for non-payment here. So a sentence or two in at the top of page 10, it says, "The taxes so ordered shall be assessed by the assessor of the district on the taxable inhabitants and the property in the district according to the last valuation made by, made by the assessors of the town, towns, or towns wherein the property to be assessed lies," so on and so forth. So I just, I wanna make sure I understand this, because when you guys came before us before, I understood that from a homeowner perspective, who is looking to connect into the sewer, right, the system. Right, we know that there's a potentially, if things go well, there's a long-term, you know, target 40-year loan to pay for the costs, then we know that there's gonna be some sort of monthly service fee that would be.
Assessment fee or betterment fee, correct.
Yep, yep, yep. But we're talking a tax on top of that as well?
Okay, so, good question. Right now, when we go out to get bonding, the bond companies like to know that you have the ability to tax, and so it's something that they're gonna be looking for. It's not our plan to tax. Our plan is to have a betterment fee or assessment and a user charge. So that, that legislation, that, that language has to be in there, or the bondholders get a little bit nervous about.
Sure.
Not being able, you know, us to be able to back, back it up with taxes if necessary. But the entire sewer project is, has been defined and conceptualized without any additional taxes.
Okay. And my concern when I read that is I felt that there's definitely gonna be a financial burden to people who need to connect into the, into the system?
Yeah.
And then, you know, it, you know, it could be the proverbial straw that breaks the camel's back here.
Well, that's right. And, and, you know, let's, let's, let's be clear, I mean, the whole purpose of this is to meet the requirements, the environmental requirements of the town at the least cost.
Yep.
And so the idea of having a sewer system and, and having it with the least amount of cost in terms of financing, the long amortization, is to drive those costs down as much as we can. So we're not looking to add more taxes. I mean, I'm very, I live here, I'm very sympathetic to the tax situation in the town.
Mm-hmm, okay. I'm, I'm almost there, I appreciate everyone's patience here. Middle of page 12, which is section 24, subsection 10, talking about, you know, potential income, interest or profits made on, that could be realized from investments. May be applied to the payment of the outstanding bonds or notes. To be so refunded after the terms of the escrow have been fully satisfied and carried out, any balance of such proceeds and interest, income, or profits, if any earned or realized on the investments thereof, may be returned to the district for use by it in furtherance of its purposes. This is just a comment, not a question, I mean, if you were ever to find yourself in that sort of situation, again, I don't have a good sense of what the books might look like, but I would, you know, encourage, you know, the district to look at what might be done, if anything, to give relief to the individuals within the district, the, the customers that are the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is a, this is a not-for-profit situation here, and the only cost that we're gonna be looking to cover is the cost of maintaining the system.
Yep.
And just, just on a further note, we're, we're looking at a very minimal amount of staffing. I know that there was, were people at one time talking about, oh, you know, there's gonna be all kinds of personnel and all this. I'll tell you, when we start out, we're looking at one full-time person, superintendent, we're looking at a part-time general manager, and we're looking at a part-time clerk and part-time bookkeeper or bookkeeping services. And that's it. And that's gonna be it for a foreseeable future. So we're, we're understanding that it's gonna be a pretty low-budget operation, because, you know, we're not looking at buying more vehicles and that sort of thing. I mean, we've got a long way to go, and, and we're just gonna keep it very economic.
Okay. Last question. Section 34, exemption from taxation, the top of page 19 here. So, Mr. Kendricks, you just mentioned that the entity will be a nonprofit or not-for-profit?
Have to be, I, whatever municipal, quasi-governmental agencies are, I don't know what the proper term is, whatever the town is. What is the town? Is it not-for-profit, or?
It's a government entity.
Government entity. So I would just, you know, so it basically feels we're, we're, you know, if this legislation were to pass and be adopted and, and all that sort of stuff, we're giving the, the district some amount of autonomy, we're giving you land and/or assets if we were to kinda go down that road, and then, I guess on top of that, there's no tax, like, we're not, I'm just trying to better understand what the town is getting, what, what are the benefits?
Okay. Well, first of all, I, I mean, I think that, that this entity is being put together for the benefit of the citizens. I mean, all of our citizens are responsible for wastewater disposal on their properties. And so we're trying to provide the, the most cost-effective way for certain areas of town to do that. In other parts of the town that are not part of the district, we're trying to provide the same wastewater, onsite wastewater services that we've had before. And, and I think the overall benefit to everyone in the town is, is a lack of pollution going into the river, sewers along the area that might promote economic development. So I think there's lots of benefits to the town, both the people who would have the sewers and the town in general, possible economic development. I mean, I think that there's, you know, if you're talking about attracting business to the town, if there were sewers along Main Road, or some areas near the water, it would be much easier and much more attractive to have businesses here. And ultimately, that's what we'd like to do.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Gerlach, there's, there's two things. One is that the new, the new district, if it should be formed, will like the town not have to pay taxes. The other reason the language is in there is that it's telling the bankers that this district is gonna be tax exempt, so that when they borrow money, they'll be borrowing the tax exempt rates rather than taxable rates, so they'll be borrowing at a lower interest rate. So not only should they not pay taxes, but, but the banks aren't gonna have to pay taxes on the interest that's paid to them, so it sort of, it works in two different ways.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Anyone else?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Palatia?
Thanks very much for taking some time here. The question I have is, is essentially, we talked about this months ago, there was some rough, you know, mathematics done as to how we would, how we would aggregate and kinda provide costs to, or, or allocate costs to individual users. I have two kinda prongs to that question. The first is on capital items, so infrastructure that is not sort of at the doorstep, so your pump stations and main junction lines and all that stuff. Is that something that we need to pay a lot of attention to in the legislation, or is that going to be formulated during a, I don't know, another kind of document, a charter or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, basically, the enabling legislation obviously creates the entity, but we will have to draft up rules and regulations and procedures and policies and that sort of thing, and bylaws.
Right.
So this is, this is just the first of several documents that will, will define, that will get into some of the things that the Tiverton ordinance gets into more specifics, what can and cannot be done, et cetera. In terms of pump stations and other, other assets that, that may have to be designed and built for certain areas of town, those assets would be allocated to that area of town. Like, for instance, in the Bay, Bay Street area, there are no pump stations, because that's, it's, it's all downhill going right to the interceptor, and so we have the benefit of gravity there. In the Riverside Drive area, there may need for one, maybe two pump stations, depending on where it is and that sort of thing. And so that's one of the reasons why costs will be different in different neighborhoods, and we've tried to be fair, so that, you know, we'll come up with the most cost-effective design for that area, and when we bid that area out and, and all that, then the people will pay for the area that they're in. Bay Street will pay a different rate than Riverside Drive and Pardon Gray and Garden Heights and that sort of thing.
And that'll ultimately be based on who decides to opt into each district?
That's correct.
Or, I'm, I'm saying district, but I, I guess I'm.
Sub-district, yeah.
Sub-district, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. And the second question is, at the sort of user end, from the street to the, that's going to be, I imagine, part of that discussion as well?
Yes.
It's not something that you can, and is gonna be informed by how many people decide, okay. I'm answering my own questions. The last question I had was, are, I just wanted to understand, and it's not really terribly related to the legislation, it is related to the operation of this thing, is how these pump stations and, I don't know what the other physical assets of a system like this would be, but is there a timeline of 30 or 40 years that we, that the, the district would envision of some sort of capital replacement, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, I mean, right now, there isn't a lot of assets, there's four pump stations, four or five pump stations, and there's some pipe in the ground. The main, the main interceptor is a 24-inch diameter interceptor that runs, you know, along, along Bay Street there. And so there's not much in the way, assets, and then there's the L account, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars there. So, so those are all the assets. And then, as we build more assets, then we'll obviously have to have a way of maintaining those assets and replacing those assets over time. So the entity will have to have some sort of a sinking fund, or some way of dealing with that.
Okay. Because, you know, that's something certainly I'm sensitive to as, as we go through planning exercises for future assets, is that it's, it's, it's very easy to get in the swing of, oh, we did it 10 years ago, oh, we did it 15 years ago, and then it creeps up on you, and you're, you're sitting facing, you know, millions of dollars in capital expenditures that you didn't quite have a handle on. So, I mean, you guys are smart, and.
Well, that's, that's the one, you talk about advantages to the town, that, that would be an advantage to the town, the town would have to deal with it.
Right.
It would both, you know, it would be the district.
I mean, it would be, you know, from at least our perspective, it's, it's, it's shifting liability rather than eliminating the liability.
Right.
So we're just shifting it onto end users, or the collective end users.
Well, the, the reality is, right now, is that the sewer users are, are literally paying 100% of the cost anyway.
Right.
I mean, all of, all of the clerks, all of the superintendent's costs, insurance and everything, all the costs are going to, are being paid by the ratepayers right now. So in essence, if this thing starts July 1, there's really not gonna be any change to the end user in terms of, you know, they'll, they'll pay the district instead of the town, but it's been the same anyway. I mean, it's, it's been self-funding for a while.
Right.
The only thing that's different, that'll be different is, is, well, you know, the town has, has paid a certain amount out of the general fund to fund the onsite portion of what, what the wastewater commission does for the rest of the town. And so that really won't be different either. So it won't be a, a big change in that way.
The last question I had was some, I didn't wanna jump in on Bill's question, but this, this idea of various arrangements with real property and personal property, and it just sort of rang a bell in my head, is, I presume throughout this districting process, when an individual connects to the system, there is some kind of easement that is gonna be transferred, or, or license that would be granted to the, is this, no, yeah, I see no movement of heads, or is it just?
I mean, your average homeowner, no, is not gonna give an easement to the district, because the average homeowner is gonna own the pipes up through to his property line anyway.
Oh, I see.
And so there's nothing that the district would need an easement for.
It would only be in the case of a, a large line.
Yeah, there might be some specific instances where we're cut across open areas or something like that, and not be in the streets, that it might be an easement required.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Yes.
I just had a couple of questions, coming from that, living in that area. I get questioned by a lot of people on this, and I don't think everyone quite understands it, but the ability to tax, you've got it in the legisla, the draft legislation.
Yes.
And you're saying, no, no, we're not gonna tax, but you may have to assess tax in the future, but it's not the intent of the get, get this up and going.
That is, that is correct.
But, but it is still there, and it is not the town's decision whether or not you tax, but it is that district's decision.
That's correct.
And I'm just wondering, Mr. Levy, is this a unique way to get a district together, where you're gonna have like sub-districts voting, and, I mean, is this used in other places like this? Is this, what's gonna make me feel comfortable that this is gonna get going and everybody's gonna get on board?
I would say that the majority of the legislation is very standard. It's not standard for wastewater, because there, there is no standard wastewater. The two points that you bring up is, is the taxation, so let me just talk to you a second. There are two kinds of bonds, there's general obligation bonds and revenue bonds. And a general obligation bond is that you are pledging the ability to tax a security to the bondholder. Revenue bond is you're pledging your ability to charge rates to the bondholder to pay it off. Now, with water, if somebody doesn't pay, you can turn off the water, and it's, it's a powerful incentive. You don't have that with, with wastewater. So for the people lending the money, they like the, it's, it's just not a good idea. So, and I would wanna be the guy who does it. So, so what you're doing is, is you're telling the people who are lending you the money, that in fact, if it all goes, if it all goes bad, we do have, ultimately have the power of taxation. So it, it just makes them feel, it gives them a warm and fuzzy feel. Okay. The second part of your question is, in terms of funding the way Tiverton is planning, it is, this is the first time I have seen it this way, and the more I think about it, the more interesting it becomes, because it's a very, very democratic process as to whether you're gonna have wastewater service in your area or not. It never, I've never, I mean, I've seen people vote for the district, yes or no, but I've, I've really not seen a group of citizens, a community, a neighborhood say yea or nay on this project. So when we started talking about it, I said, I've never heard about this, and as, as we talk about it more, and I drafted legislation to be able to do this, I really like the idea of having neighborhoods make a decision about what their wastewater services are gonna be, and what in fact they're gonna be paying for, so.
Okay, so I have two more.
So I have to admit, it's a, it was a brainstorm.
It's, it's unique.
But, 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 I mean, obviously, I, I think it's fair, because, you know, certain people in certain areas shouldn't be denied the opportunity to get sewers just because someone else doesn't want them.
I'm sure, the cost is gonna vary because of the areas that you live in, and that, that makes sense to me.
Right, right, some people are very motivated in town, and others might go, eh, not so much. That's okay.
But, but this really works when you get just about everybody joining in on this. I mean, this, you're gonna.
It, it doesn't, it almost doesn't matter, because, because, let, let's say nobody votes, yes, we still have a district with the current users, so the district. So, the district, I mean, and so we're going to serve the current users and the town even if every neighborhood said, no, we don't want it.
Okay.
Okay? And so, but my thought is, is that at least some of the neighborhoods will want it.
I'm sure they will.
And so, so we don't know whether this is going to be an additional 500 users or an additional 3,000 users. That will be up to the communities.
Understood. Just a question on the USDA funds. So, you're kind of... You're kind of setting this on the idea that you will hope to gain a percentage of 45% savings or whatever by using USDA funds.
That is correct.
That is funds that come into the state, but they're not guaranteed funds, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, it's going to weigh heavy on what you're able to obtain that year on USDA funds?
That's correct. Each year, and if you've been watching the press, the farm bill is bottled up. So, ultimately, there'll be a farm bill, let us pray, and that there'll be an allocation to Rhode Island, and Rhode Island will get a certain amount of money, and as will every other state. Now then, what's happened in the past is if Rhode Island doesn't spend all of its money, it goes back to Washington into what is called the pool, and somebody else will get the money. So, it is my goal that Rhode Island gets the money that's been allocated. Ultimately, assuming that you like this legislation, we would submit it to USDA, and USDA would make a determination about whether this wastewater district would be eligible for funds. But this is the first step in the process.
Just the first step. And my last concern is, and I know this is a legal issue and probably Andy has to work on it, but when you transfer all the assets of the sewer, that includes our pipeline, which happens to have a TIF bond on it that we just financed, and so obviously, we cannot the bondholders hold. So, I'm sure that's a legal problem that's going to be resolved before any of this can go too far.
Yeah.
Because you need that line.
Yes.
We can't operate without our line, and we happen to have bonds out on that.
Yeah. Andy and I chatted some about that, and we talked about... Andy, you want to make a comment on that?
Sure, if I may. Yeah, I mean, I've only had this since Friday to review, and I still have some comments. I still have some tweaks that I would like to recommend. If you're so inclined to move forward with it tonight, that's fine, just I would request you make it subject to my final approval, so I do have some issues there. The other things, there are two questions still in my mind. One is just confirmation that approval of the voters is not needed in a referendum or a financial town referendum for the transfer of the assets, and I'm looking into that. I don't believe so, but I'm double-checking that. And then, the second question is about the interceptor. And I've got to go back. The actual TIF bond is before my time. I'm going to go back to the original documents, the original referendum for that and see about the language, what problems or issues we may or may not have. It's possible that that might be something that may be conveyed to the district on a lease for a period of years until the bonds are paid off. And then, you know, it would only be conveyed to them after the bonds are paid off, something like that. We have to be careful about making sure that we're not in default of the terms of the bond. And if we have to amend the terms for the bondholders or anything, that's almost impossible without a great expense. So, we have to make sure that we're complying and not in default with that, and I'll be looking into that. But I think it's manageable, it's just depending on how we word it. Obviously, the easiest thing would be if we're able to just transfer it all upfront, but if not, we'll work out some other scheme. And I mean, scheme as far as... I don't mean that kind of scheme, I mean, we'll work out some other schematic plan as a way to do it.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, you know, obviously, since we utilize Fall River as the ultimate end for the wastewater and subject thereto for whatever they're charging us to process all this. One of the things that I think about, should Fall River go on a major capital improvement plan or whatever on their wastewater management, that would have a great impact on the fees that we charge. So, will there be some sort of cap built in or whatever? Because if Fall River decides to build a new billion-dollar wastewater system, that cost would be transferred to the users here in Tiverton.
Well, you know, we've had a meeting with Terry Sullivan of Fall River, and we've talked to him about this project. And we also talked to them about some of the connection charges that they would charge. Typically, for a three-bedroom home, they would charge like 500 and some dollars per bedroom. So, if you had a three-bedroom home and it was... And you wanted to connect a sewer, it was like $1,500. We've talked them into reducing that to zero. So, that was part of our initial plan. So, by being able to work with Fall River and reduce charges and convince them that it's better to have more people on so that they can get the ongoing revenue instead of, you know, these initial charges, that's good. And Fall River is a regional plant, and, you know, we also talked about, you know, they're under capacity right now because all of the industry that's moved out of Fall River. So, all I can say at this point is that they're looking for customers, they're not looking to drive away customers, and I think that at least in the near to intermediate term, I'm not anticipating, and from what I hear from Mr. Sullivan, that there's going to be any large construction project that will necessitate a huge increase in their user charges to us. That being said, you know, you never know. I mean, and that would be the case whether we were a district or not. I mean, they would try to pass those charges on to their users regardless. So, that's not anything that we're ever going to really have control over totally.
Okay. And the other question I have, and it's only a thought, it's regarding to the tax or the ability to tax, that it does not speak to, you know, it's based on the assessed value and so forth and so on, but it doesn't speak to if there's also a cap in that interim. Because if you have taxes, and we know how the assessments go, you know, right now, they've been kind of low, but as the economy shifts up, so do the assessments, and so if there was a tax imposed, it would be a greater burden on the sewer user. So, I'm just, again, wondering if that... If they take into account what the tax rate is in general, so that, you know, so if you're paying 5%, 10%, or whatever, your normal taxes, and now you're going to be burdened with another 3%, 5%, you know, 10%, whatever that may be in order to meet your commitments and liabilities. So, I'm just wondering, has there been any thought given to a cap on that? Because, again, if you're looking at user costs and then the ability to tax, you know, the individual user hypothetically could have a major impact, you know, in one year if something went, you know, all right.
Yeah. You know, we... To be candid, we haven't... That whole tax language is in there was only for the benefit of the potential bondholders that Steve talked about. The whole program that we talked about putting together all the sewers, none of it had to do anything to do with taxes. And so, we didn't... We haven't given thought to caps on tax or anything because in my mind, to start to talk about it means it's something that we're intending on really doing or possibly doing, and we're not. I mean, you know, we have to put it in there to satisfy the people with the money, but right now, the intent is not to assess a tax over and above the betterment fee and the user charge. It's not in the plan in any fashion. Now, everything hits the fan, and in order to survive, you got to do a tax, then I guess that's, you know, all bets are off in that way. But that's not where we're... That's not in our plan right now.
Comment?
Mr. Roderick, it sort of gets back to Mr. Pelletier's question of charging for replacement of infrastructure. Ultimately, with the new district or with you right now, there are charges right now based on the betterment fee and the user charge. Now, the only reason you'd ever think about doing a tax is that if you didn't charge enough on the betterment fee and you didn't do a user tax, and nobody paid their bill. I mean, that's... I mean, it reflects sort of a total failure of the district or the town to be able to do what it's doing, and I think the town has shown and the commission has shown that they really do know what they're doing, that they're charging betterment fees. So, it's sort of like a trust me thing, but this is legislation that you'll see throughout the country, throughout water districts in the state. Again, it's more to make the bondholders feel comfortable in any sort of reality.
For us. I mean, I don't use Tiverton Water, but I understand that they have some sort of a tax, that they charge annually based on valuation. And that's not our intent at all at this point.
I just have one quick follow-up question regarding the assets. Have we fully quantified all of the assets that we're talking about here? Is there a list?
There is a preliminary list that we would submit as part of this, and part of that is reconciling the interceptor and that sort of thing. But ultimately, we would want to sit down with the town and make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and there's a proper transition of the assets and of the operations of wastewater management in town so that we can take it over and be done with it.
Okay. Just felt a little open-ended before, so.
Anything else from the council? Okay. At this point in time, again, I know we've been through this and we've looked at it, but I would like this to go to the solicitor for final review before we take action, if that's the wish of the council. I just think I want to make sure that we all understand, you know, all the pieces and so forth. I mean, obviously, we know how important it is for us to secure our waterways and stuff, and by having sewers, that's going to benefit us greatly, especially here in Tiverton. So, again, so I would... So, we just forward this to the town solicitor to clear up and quantify any issues or languages, and then have it for our next meeting.
Have it the next meeting. So, how about just a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
It is a public...
This is... This is not a public...
No, it's a presentation.
It's a public presentation.
It's just a presentation.
I was asking, but there's a thunder.
So, I will entertain a motion to turn this to the solicitor for review and to have it brought back at our next scheduled meeting.
When is that?
It's February 10th.
Oh, so we can have...
Two weeks, two weeks from tonight, yep.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, Mr. Kendricks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Levy.
Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Oops. Is that yours, Laura?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Nancy's. Thanks. Okay, presentation, board and commission annual reports to Pecassett Hill Cemetery.
Mr. President, just so you realize, it was, I guess, the wish of the council that we keep bringing them forward with the annual reports, so I'll keep kind of putting two or three a meeting on.
Policy.
It's policy.
It's policy, yes.
Hi, Ann.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Just for the record, if you'll just state your names, so that...
John Christian, the treasurer.
Welcome again, and you want to give us your little overview?
What is that, please?
You want to talk about your...
Well, this is the first time that we've come in front of the council where we got our annual reports. We just normally submit them, and that's about the end of it here. So, this is the first time. Can you tell me what you're going to do?
Well, basically, for the people here and out there in TV land, just so you can say, you know, what the Pecassett Hill Cemetery Commission's been doing, and where they are at present, you know, what you've done, operations, services you provided, improvements.
All right, we can do that, I guess. All right, I mean, this is about... We have, excuse me, five members, Ann, Chilwell, Robert Viera, myself, and Ellen Hall. And the superintendent is Ron Helder. He's got the contract. He's got a contract for three years with a two-year option. And our town council liaison is John Fetter. Meetings are held once a month on the second Wednesday. This year, in regards to operations and services, we had 35 burials, 12 cremations in the veteran circle, we had two burials. And the commission has sold four cremation... Four burials in the cremation section and 22 burial plots this year. There were three returns and one transfer. Ron and his crew have done a great job thus far in providing the services to the town in regards to burials and maintaining the grounds. We have a little office there, next to the... Within the town community center, that's where we hold our meetings. This year's improvements, we've had pothole repairs, the signs, some of the signs in the cemetery were repainted, the storage building door was repainted. We now have a sign indicating where the cremation section is, and we have American flags placed around the veteran circle. The records in regards to the burials, they're stored here in the town hall area, in the safe area there. We also have a computer in the community center, and various members have... In their personal computers have their... In their disk. In the town hall area, there is a disk and a couple of three leaf binder books that have all the information in regards to the burial. Repairs were minor this year. We just had some... Unfortunately, we have two flagpoles, one in the vet circle and one in the community. It's called the community flagpole for the police and the officers within the town. Unfortunately, the line broke. It's very, very windy in that area, and that particular line broke, and it took us a while to restring it because we had to get a... Quite a lift to get up there to do it. The fees, unless you want me to sum what the fees are.
Yeah, go ahead.
Really? You want to look at the fees? All right. Cost of a single lot is $400, that's without a vault. We have various sections in the cemetery. And one of the newest sections we have right now, we have... You have to have a four-plot lot. So, in other words, it costs you $1,600. We have one section still remaining that you can buy a single plot for $400. Once you buy a four-grave lot, that gives you the permission to put an upright type stone. In the single lots in section 6,000, it's just a flat marker. The superintendent, that's Ron Helder, this charge is separate. For him to open and enclose a grave, it's going to cost the person $450, and it increases due to the weather conditions from November 15 to March 1st, and that increases to another 100 bucks, $550. We have a mechanical device that lowers the coffin into the ground, and if the funeral parlor doesn't supply that, we charge the family $75. And that's one of our ways of getting income, really. The only income we have is that type there and selling the lots and interest from the CDs. Cost of the lot for the new cremation section is still $400, and it's limited with two cremations per lot, but this price includes the vault, and that's supplied by us. And Ron will charge $200 to open the cremation grave. And I don't know what else I can say verbally in regards to... All right, ongoing issues. Problem we have every year, and that's in regards to the flowers and plants being stolen. And we notify the police, they normally go into the area a little more frequently, but that's an ongoing issue that we don't know what to do about, okay? Memorial Day and very certain holidays. It's really unfortunate, and we don't understand why people would do that. This year, we're going to try to enforce the cemetery rules a little more stringently. We kind of, you know, a person dies, we feel bad about the families, and that's the... And actually, first, a couple of months or so, they comment their flowers, they pervert family tokens and so forth and so on. And some families normally take those away, but other families continue to do that and increase it even more. So we're, this is going to happen this year. We're going to try to enforce what our guidelines are in those particular areas. We also need to give additional roadways to go to the other back sections that we're going to develop in the near future. We've asked for funds for the town for this number of years. But due to the financial problems with the town and the community, we've always reneged and take that off or the budget committee knocks it off. Right now, it's not a problem. In the future, it will be. Goals for this coming year, the beautification of the cemetery commission. Again, I just emphasize reorganizing and cleaning up the area. Prepare an expansion plan. Review and update the bylaws. Beautification again and planting trees in various areas, and that's in the, on the north end where Humphreys, Humphreys has parks and trucks and stuff. We're trying to get some trees up there to make it a little more presentable. Again, we're going to try to acquire funds for construction of additional roadways. Need to get that through a grant, and we're going to try to do that. Website, we're updating our webs, the website as much as we can, and Jones helping us with that. Improve the veteran circle roadway. It's, the tar's kind of breaking up, and we're going to try to work with the VFW to see if we can put an overlay of tar to make that a little more presentable. And there's a street that, in the past, instead of it going straight, it takes a little bit of a hook, and we want to straighten that out. I don't know how that happened in the first place, but now that we're the commission, we're trying to correct that thing. Financially, Denise and her group has been fantastic since she came aboard. They've reorganized the record procedures that they present to us, so it's a lot easier to look at and to handle and to approve than it was in the past. In regards to what the expenses, right now, the expenses for last year was $24,562. Income-wise, and that's from the sale of plots and the maintenance fees of that contraption that lowers the coffins, was $21,648, which gave us a shortfall of $2,914. Now, the original report I gave you didn't have that number on there, and I did email, I don't know if you guys can see.
Yeah, we just got it.
My computer skills are not the greatest. I tried to put this file on one file, so what happened to this, from landscape, it went to portrait, and when it went to portrait.
Cut off, Ann.
It did not get some of the light. So this is, that's the real one. Regarding shortfalls of money, since 2009, when the CDs, we used to get about 4.5%. Now we get like 0.65%. So all of a sudden, our income from 2009 to now is not the greatest as it was before. So from 2009, I made some rough counts, we lost from $8,000 to, and this year was $2,000, whatever I just said, $900. So we're running on a deficit at the time, at this moment. We're going to look into it and see how far we can, we can run with this. We have around $70,000 in, in our expenditure account. Well, we have $70,000 now, as that report was $83,000. So the non-expendable, which is like, which perpetual care is, is around $400,000. So we got a total somewhere pretty close to a half a million dollars. But a pretty good portion of that, which is the $400,000, is the money that we cannot touch, is the perpetual fund. Well, that concludes my report. You need anything to say?
No.
Okay. Open for questions.
Anything from the council?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions, just to understand. Thanks for being here, by the way.
You're welcome.
Just to understand this sort of scope, is, do you, do you keep a record of, or is this, is this an easy question to answer? How many plots are available left in the cemetery to sell?
Two thousand two hundred.
Two thousand two hundred. And we sold, you sold 22 this past year. Is that an aver, is that a roughly what you do?
I would say.
Well, it, it varies, it varies. And I made some kind of quick calculations, I don't know if I got, I did in regards to the monies. Wait a minute, I got a piece of paper here that might help you out here. Now, well, since 2009, we sold 137 plots, so I mean, somewhere around there.
Yeah, it's about 25.
Some, some years, I mean, I, I got it in terms of monies.
Yeah.
Sometimes we, and so 16,000, 12,000, 8,000, and then 7,000, you know, stuff like that. There raises from 18,000 to 7, depending on people dying.
So that 22,000 includes plots that are both.
I'm sorry, 22.
2,200, I'm sorry, are both plots that are, are not currently, for lack of a better term, occupied and also are not spoken for? They're not already sold?
I need a quick breakdown.
Okay, great.
We've got various sections. So you've got section 3,000, we have 68 plots available there. 4,000, which we, which would be the newer one, that's not even open yet, we could put about 792 plots there. 5,000, that's a big one, and that's our newest one, if you wanted to do a four-plot lot with a stone. We got about 1,000 plots there. And the 6,000 one, which is only a single one, we've got about 450 left.
Okay. But I'm, those are, there's 2,200 that are open and up, and up to be sold? In other words, okay, great, great.
But you'd need a road to get into.
For 4,000, we would need, yeah. Unfortunately, I don't think, but I, you can't see it here, but that's the top one right there.
Yeah.
And that's right up, that's up, that is east. So we want to go to that one, we've got to cut a road between below it and above it.
Yeah, okay.
And that's going to cost some money.
Yeah.
That's when we come to you for money.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm sort of trying to understand, you know, what our timeline is for, for capital improvements like that, what we need to, when we need to time that so that we're.
That's tough because the old pen's dying.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's a tough one. As a matter of fact, I was hoping that someone, somewhere along the line, in regards to the commission, kind of, kind of help us out and let, let us know how long you think we will last, you know? I'm not that smart.
Ron said it will last about 10 years.
Well, that's, yeah, well, that's, I'm talking about finance-wise. I don't have that number. If you know of any good accountants or any, anybody with a crystal ball, send them to our meeting and they can help us out.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your service.
Is that it?
And certainly, as, as, as been stated, the, the revenue is what is covering the, the maintenance. So I don't think it was mentioned, but the, a portion of the plot fee, a portion of it goes to current maintenance and a portion of it goes to perpetual care. And one would think that, you know, with a half a million dollars, we would have enough money to cover maintenance. So this, I just wanted to say that this is a trend, that it's taking money away from basically the principal in order to maintain the property. So if this trend continues, action will have to be taken, whether it's increased fees or a decrease in the amount that goes to perpetual care. Because it's, the return right now is 0.65%.
We have 56% of the, of the sale goes to perpetual and 44% goes to the expenditure.
Great.
Who administers that fund, that perpetual? Because it sounds like, you know, it sounds almost like an endowment. Is that, is that a good characterization of how that fund works? It's a, it's a locked bit of capital that we invest and the returns are supposed to pay for the, in the maintenance?
That's a very good question.
Generates some interest and goes right back into.
Right. But if we're talking about half a percent CDs, then who administers that fund?
That's the treasurer's.
The treasurer handles all the investments on that. At times, it's been in different types of investments, and we've gone out on treasury notes, everything, and now she's got it in what she can to get the best we can on it. But she, the treasurer handles everything on that.
Okay.
It's just divided as unexpendable and expendable.
And, and I think, though, we've had some questions have come up on, at the commission as to what state law applies to this perpetual care. Are we allowed to take any, you know, we have some expendable, some non-expendable, and.
You cannot use the non-expendable that goes to its schedule here.
Yeah.
We just didn't know if there was any particular state law that applies to cemeteries that the commission needs to be aware of. Obviously, the commission has been in place, but they have been following the same procedures over the years that have been in place. So if Andy has any insight into that, that would, we'd appreciate any information, if there's state regulations that apply to cemeteries that we need to be aware of. Just as a recap.
Sure.
You can, if you could provide that in the future, I think the commission would be.
Sure. As far as the investment things, I don't think there's anything particular. I mean, the key thing, it's a standard thing with the town, it's a fiduciary responsibility, and that's the same duty the treasurer has with all the funds.
I guess what we don't know, Andy, is where the 56% came from. Is that recorded somewhere? I mean, it's, you know, we don't know what, what the rules are, so that's what we need hope of.
Okay.
Probably have to look at the enabling documents.
Where do those deficits come from? What, where, when we spend into a deficit, like, I know it's only $2,000 this year, but what is the mechanics of how that operates? I mean, they don't, I mean, they don't have a fund.
They still have a balance in their expendable funds of 70 or.
So that eats, so that eats, eats away at that.
This is the balance.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else from the council? Thank you. And thank you for all the hard work you do there.
This is tangential, but if I may ask a question. I just wanted to ask if there's, if we can get a general idea of how many accounts there are like this?
Just for cemetery? Because we have several.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, we have a half a million, or $400,000 in, in capital that's invested. Are there, just for the cemetery commission, I just want to understand what this entire scope of all of the municipal side of that is, excluding, excluding pension, obviously. Yes, yes.
I think Denise was coming, but she probably hasn't gotten to me yet.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I'll just ask.
We'll get her tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Landfill recycling committee. Good evening. Mr. Reese, Mr. Belucci, welcome. Thanks for coming.
Well, we're bringing you good news. The landfill, I'm going to start off with the landfill. We got a new license this past year from D E M. We were able to, we met all the requirements, we, all the, the compliance rules and regulations. Everything is up to par. The landfill has a clean bill of health. As far as the, the landfill, to give you an idea of, of how well the diversion rate has been up there, our numbers for 2012 were 33 tons of trash. That was down from a total we had in 2010 of 6,300 tons. So we've had a considerable drop in the amount of trash entered in the landfill. With that, we've been able to increase the life of the landfill to, between 2017 and 2018, which is quite a bit of time. And that's pretty much because of pageant throw. It's really worked very well for the town.
Right.
The, as far as our recycling, we reached a total of 2,035 tons the past year, which is quite a bit. We did, previous year, we did 1724 tons. That was.
It was 2011.
Oh, 2011, yeah. Also, as part of the recycling, this past year, we were able to receive a check for $15,374 as a profit share from Resource Recovery. That's what all the communities in the state get, reimburse, yeah, profit share.
Yep.
The pageant throw program, it, our numbers are fairly steady. We've, we had a first year revenue from the pageant throw was 433,650. I'm sorry, that was, that was this past year. The number we had initial year was 480,000. But that, that number was because we had a number of extra, I think we had two extra months in that, in that year when we recovered. So our numbers seem to be holding very steady with the pageant throw revenues.
Anything else? All right. Just a little bit of more information. The Christmas tree pick, I mean, excuse me, the Christmas rubbish pickup still produced three times as much rubbish as it did in a normal week, which we would have expected. But the limited two bags worked in most cases. We did have to fight a snowstorm in the middle of it, I think a holiday in the middle of it, so that you couldn't add more confusion to what happened, but we did get through it. I'm pleased to say that our recycling rate, as recorded by Resource Recovery, that's all the recycling we send there from the landfill and which collected, we've moved up to number six in the state, way down the bar. So huge congratulations to all the citizens that jumped on board with this program. It's, it's worked outstanding and the proof's in the pudding just by the numbers that they We had our Christmas tree pickup for a couple of weeks. That went on fine. And like I say, our recycling rates just seem to grow every single month, and I think it's, it has a lot to do with the availability of the landfill. We've made it more accessible, user-friendly, clean, you don't get all muddy and dirty when you go up there any longer. So that's encouraged a lot of drop-offs, and I think the pageant throw, like I said, money talks. If you can throw it in the recycle bin for nothing, it's a lot cheaper than paying for it to be thrown away and the poof, the poof has really come out. So things are going well.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything from the council?
I just have a quick question. Have we earmarked anything yet for this 15,000 and change that we received this past year from Rhode Island Resource Recovery? I know it has to be used to improve kind of recycling efforts within the town.
Well, committee's been working on a number of issues. We will need to, at some point, move the recycling area. We're trying to decide, looking at different options and maybe different locations in town right now, so we'd kind of like to keep that money available when we have to do that move.
Sure. And maybe this is something we can talk about offline. I, you know, I'm keenly aware only because I'm, I'm down there quite a bit during most of the year for, for town sports activities, but I'm wondering if some of this money could be used to improve the recycling infrastructure at some of our town recreation facilities, like Town Farm and Fort Barton. Right now, what we have is, you know, through no one's fault, is a sporadic. Right now, what we have is, you know, through no one's fault, is a sporadic, you know, mapping of a trash can here, a recycling bin here, and they're spread out all over the place. And best practices show that when you compare a recycling bin next to a trash receptacle side by side, people are, will make the right, or often will make the right decision and toss the plastic bottle or whatever into the recycling bin and not into the trash. And what we see, week after week after week, is just plastic bottles and cans going in the trash and, and all that sort of thing. And so perhaps there's an opportunity to talk about better pairing of recycl, like, you need more recycling, kind of structured bins there along with trash bins and kind of figure out how to pair them up better across our recreation facilities.
We, we do quite a bit of recycling, believe it or not. We, there is a lot of recycling that happens there.
Yeah.
It's just so hard. You have a lot of different, well, you have outside concerns sometimes come in and they may not realize it, they just use the, the regular receptacles.
Yeah.
It's, it's very hard. I mean, I know that some of the leagues have been pushing the recycling. We're probably happy about that.
Yeah, which is a great, it's a great thing. I just think we could be more successful with additional bins and infrastructure in place. I can't imagine they're a, a big spend.
We do a regular pickup of the recyclables.
Yep.
At the warfields.
I think we'll work with recreation and get together with that.
Yeah, I had reached out to the recreation commission on this and did not hear anything, so I figured I'd bring it up here.
And as Steve explained, the, the next stage, we're filling kind of the left side of the road as you drive out. At some point in time, the whole center of the road is gonna be filled 25 feet tall all the way up to our recycling center. That's why we have to look at plans of relocating the recycling center, but that's gonna be a dump and that's gonna be capped. And it's, and we are looking at different areas and we'll probably come up with a recommendation at some point in time. But it more or less has to be in the near future because it's got to be permitted through D E M. We have to move it, we have to fund it and have to decide where it's going. So that's where that funds, and it's more than 15,000. We probably have 40-plus thousand because we have money from previous year. So it has accumulated...
Give me that.
Yeah, so there are, this, this funds.
Okay, anything else from the council?
Just to tie into the question I asked earlier, what is the status of the landfill
closure account? Is that something that you guys are intimate with or should I?
Well, maybe with that, I propose, you know, putting the funds that haven't been put in it, you know, for this upcoming budget, I think it was 160,000, something like that. I still feel we're kind of on the cusp of, of having enough money for closure. Our, our rubbish volumes are dropping. That means our revenues are dropping, which isn't a bad thing because it's extending the life of the landfill. And every year we can extend the life, it saves us from hauling stuff to Johnson, paying for that and paying to dump it. So I'm guessing every week, year we can delay it, we're saving $400,000 in additional costs that we're paying now. So it's a good thing to see the revenues dropping. I'd like to see them really drop. That means the life of the landfill's extended, which is a good thing. So we're seeing that. Last three years, I think 20% drop in revenues over the last three years, which is good because there's 20% less rubbish going into the landfill.
Well, Steve, I can interrupt. That's what I keep telling people, that I'm hoping that the revenues for page your throw keep dropping because that means the landfill is staying open that much longer. Because the only way you can put anything into the landfill is with one of those new bags. So to the extent that the, the revenues from the page your throw bags is dropping, I know that there's less bags now going into the dump, so.
So is that landfill closure account on the same line as that, I'm sorry, perpetual care account?
Yes, it's invested separate, generates its own interest, yes.
Do you know what that rate is?
I don't know what the interest rate is, no.
Okay.
The last, the last time I, I spoke to Denise, I think she, she anticipated it would be over, was it something over $200,000 this year or something in that range?
She gives us, she gives a report to the council on this too, so maybe it's due for the time for the report, but I'll talk with her tomorrow and get...
But it's certainly not 0.6%.
No.
Three and a half, I'm guessing.
That sounds more realistic, three and a half.
The last time I spoke to her, about a year ago on the interest rate, she was hoping she'd get it between three and 3.5%. That would be cool.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks very much.
Any else from the council? It's noon on hearing day, but I'll, I'll let you ask a question.
No, 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 you can ask.
Oh, Dave, come on. We assume it's business.
But I think you kind of answered my question anyway. Seeing the landfill was being pushed out to 2018, originally it was 15, 16, I believe. Have we done a real cost analysis on closing it in 15, 16 instead of 18 or 20 or 22? Because that, that cost should go up.
You want to close it early?
No, no, he's saying if, if we close it, it will cost more.
Instead of 18.
I would say that the cost of, of closing it is going up 3% a year and the cost you're making on your money is going up 3% a year. So it's a balance, you know, bing, bing, bing. Whatever you want to close it, it's, it's equal to today. I would say the costs and the interest are equal.
Okay.
You kind of see that.
Well, that's, so when, when do we close it? That's, is it, is the cost gonna go higher?
It'll be higher than we anticipated.
It's gonna be higher than I anticipated, yeah, absolutely, 3%. And 3% interest. I know, I know it balances out.
Yeah, consumer price index is probably gonna go up.
Yeah, right.
And the interest we're getting on the money is going...
Three. So it balances out.
It really balances, yeah.
But I mean, I, I still think we should come up with a timeline of when we're gonna close it and not just, not just keep saying we're gonna, we're gonna push it.
That discussion is for another time.
Okay.
Thank you.
10 years?
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, man.
Okay, conservation commission.
Tom Ramatowski, chairman.
Hi, Tom.
Hey, Tom.
I think everybody has our report. I was just gonna highlight a few things from the report and then if there are any questions. We are a seven-member commission, but we're not quite at full speed at the moment.
Excuse me.
And the commission does meet every Wednesday, I mean, sorry, every third Tuesday night here, usually in the back room there. Okay, the major thing that we had last year, of course, as you're well aware, we gave an update about a month ago, was the ongoing efforts to get Stafford Pond back under control as drinking water supply instead of a free-for-all as encouraged by certain other entities within the state. There's been an awful lot of work done there with our legislators, with members of our commission, with members of your board, I mean, your, your council, helping out. Mr. Gerlach is, is a very big help there and that continues. It's been a slower process than we had hoped, but I guess that's related to the politics of the entire thing. We're still working on getting you that final update of what we would recommend should be done with the various activities of the neighbors to the pond. But unfortunately, Mother Nature has canceled our last two meetings. They were the nights of those bad snowstorms, so we've got to get some more time and work and just luck or maybe an omen of to come, I don't know. A few other things that, that maybe you don't know about what we do, not related to that particular issue, would be the Lloyd Center's Watershed Watch Program. That's a program that we've been working with Lloyd Center for at least 10, maybe 15 years to ensure that all of the fourth graders in town get a, an interactive educational experience, learning about watersheds, learning about groundwater, because a lot of the town does still depend on that. And even those of us like me that have city water, it actually comes from the pond and part of that program shows what happens if you pollute the pond and allow runoff and that sort of thing to get out of control chemically, what that has for implications to your water. There's some very, very nice interactive models that we were able to buy a long time ago, some grant money. And if anybody's ever interested in seeing this in action, it's very interesting to watch how the kids interact with that with the teachers. The center works with the teachers to integrate it into their lesson plan for about a week in advance. And it seems to be very well recep, received by the students. And they also get a copy of the Stafford Pond Guide to carry home, to bring to their parents, to learn about that sort of thing for future and additional reading. So we also are happy that this is funded about half out of our budget and half out of soliciting for private donations. So about $400, $500 a year is typically covered by private donations and the rest comes out of our budget. So it's about a 50-50 split. We do have a very active, we call it the litter committee, but it's actually the anti-litter committee. It's, it's a little bit misnamed that way. They have this adopt-in-area program, which now has over 50 volunteers that spend time, their own time, volunteer time, cleaning up the town, making the town look a lot nicer than it would otherwise be. We thank the DPW for its ability to get us bags for free, so the people that volunteer are not paying for the trash bags. They get special colored ones that show that it's part of this volunteer program. And we also have usually a poster contest for the students to design anti-littering posters and there's a whole judging of that and the best posters are then posted at various businesses in town. And the students get some recognition for that and it helps them also learn the importance not to throw things just anywhere, that someone has to pick that up or it doesn't look very nice. Fogland Beach, we actually own some property down there on the, the conservation side, which is the northern side of the paved road. And we've, actually are a member of the board that sort of oversees that area, the Fogland Beach Oversight Committee. As you may know, last winter, well, last fall, we really got clobbered by some storms that did a lot of damage down there. They washed out parts of the, the beach dunes. We had a whole bunch of debris piled up on that dirt road that leads to the Windsurfer's Beach on the North Cove, so it wasn't even passable. We discussed that and worked with that and had an awful lot of help from Town DPW and they did a fantastic job of restoring a lot of those areas and actually moving the playground, which was one of our main desires for many, many years because we felt the location was unsafe and it was also in the conservation area. Now it's on the other side of the road. I think it's much safer. Parents can watch their kids in there while they have people or kids swimming because they're adjacent now. So there've been a lot of changes. If you haven't been down there in the last year, really should take a look, see what's happened for the better. It's just a, a lot of good things and a lot of that again is due to Mr. Berlucci and his crew being very helpful to us in, in doing those things. So we appreciate all of that and we're gonna be looking for volunteers in the future to help maybe plant some vegetation on some of the new dunes to help stabilize them. But unfortunately, there's so much damage done by those storms that the prices of those type of plants skyrocketed, so you can't get as many past year, but we're hoping the prices come down enough that we can actually get quite a few and, and have a meaningful program there. And then finally, we've had a lot of efforts in working with the planning board to try to improve some of the language on some of the important zoning rules that govern development in town, like the overlay districts that protect our water supplies. We've got people serving on committees that look at the comprehensive plan review and things of that sort. So we do take a big interest in that and try to work with them to improve the language and get everything set there so that once we develop our town, we do it right, because you only get one chance to do that. And we want to make sure that everything comes out okay. So that's basically what I have to say and to highlight, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to.
Anything from the council? Just a quick question. Tom, if folks wanted to get involved in the litter prevention committee, how, how could they go about doing that?
There's actually a website, I think it's linked to the town website now, that's just for the litter group and it has all the details and things there. If not, they can contact me and I can certainly arrange for that to occur.
Okay, great, thanks.
We're always looking for volunteers. There's lots of areas that aren't really cleaned up that could use it, so.
Great.
Anything else from the council?
Nope. Thanks, Tom. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Especially you and your commission for all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Advertise public hearing. Public hearing, advertise ordinance amendment, chapter 30, courts, article 2, municipal court. Mr. Tights, if you'll give it over to me.
Thank you, yeah, I may. If I can get this down. This is submitted by me. This essentially is a series of housekeeping amendments to our ordinances dealing with the municipal court. In the course of our stepped-up enforcement of town ordinances and zoning issues, we've had some appeals from, we've been successful in getting convictions to municipal court. We've had some appeals in, to superior court. And at that point, we discovered that there's, the statute's actually not clear. The statute says apply shall, appeal shall apply to superior court. It doesn't say whether you're supposed to file a separate complaint to the superior court as your appeal or whether you just file a little notice of appeal here in the municipal court in Tiverton and what starts the practice. And in finding this out, there's actually a split in the counties in Rhode Island. And the northern counties, which is most of the population of the state, Providence and Bristol Counties and Kent County, they use a separate document. Someone in order to take an appeal from municipal court has to pay $165 filing fee and file a complaint and do it that way. Newport County, which is where we are, and Washington County on the other side of the southern, do it with simply the notice of appeal. And in further research, Newport, the city of Newport, which makes up most of this kind of business to the Newport County Superior Court, actually has it in their charter, that it's just a notice of appeal. So faced with trying to get the several clerks of the different counties and the presiding justice involved and trying to work up some unified scheme, on the one hand, or amending our own ordinances to clarify what the procedure is that we're actually doing, I chose that goal. So what this does is basically codify what we're doing. It provides someone will file a notice of appeal here in the town. It does go further and provide that they have to certify that they've provided notice to any opposing party and attorney. It also clarifies the question of what is the record and makes clear that the tape that is made is not part of the record on appeal. It's a public document. If someone wants a copy of the tape, they can have it, but that's not the record because the appeals are de novo. They start from scratch at the superior court. So we made that clear. And then beyond it, I cleaned up a few other things about, just with the fines, making clear that each day on which a violation exists may be deemed a separate offense. And that's basically the way it's been anyway and we've just specified it. And the cost, instead of limiting it to $40 for court costs, we've said would be set from town to, time to time by the town council in resolution. And that's about it.
All right. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Saying none, I will now close this public hearing. And anything from the council?
Nope.
If not, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance, the changes to the ordinance amendment, chapter 30, courts, article 2, municipal court, as laid out in item number B dash 3.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The town council, sitting at the Board of Licensing. Robert W. Ramos, 654 Penn Street, Fall River, Mass. Request approval of annual renewal of private detective license, February 11, 2014 to February 10, 2015, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Chief?
Yes, no objection, Mr. President. Do the background check on the gentleman. He's had a license previously for a number of years and no objection.
Okay, anything from the council? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the annual renewal of private detective's license for Robert W. Ramos, term of February 11, 2014 through February 2015. W. Ramos, term of February 11, 2014 through February 10, 2015, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. George Alzabak, George's Gas and Service, request approval petroleum storage license subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is George here?
I don't see Mr. Alzabak here, but he's putting in some gas tanks on his property upon Stafford Road.
Okay. I just have a question. Didn't he have tanks there?
It's pumps, I think.
Is it pumps or tanks? Because he had removed the pumps.
He removed the pumps.
Yeah, they're pumps.
They moved them, they got put them back.
Yeah.
And it's in the near future. It's not immediate.
But he needs his storage license.
Right, in order to keep gasoline on the property. Anything from the council? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request for approval of petroleum storage license to George's Gas and Service. Applicant's named George Alzabak, subject to meeting all legal requirements. There's no term on here, but it doesn't matter.
It's annual.
Okay.
So this will come again in November, correct?
Yeah. Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, appointments and resignations. Annual appointment of tree warden advertised. We have an applicant, John D. Manchester, 2970 Main Road. Is Mr. Manchester here?
Yes, he is. He has been for some time.
He's the present tree warden, right?
Yeah, I know.
No, I was asking.
Mr. Manchester?
I don't see him. No.
No. What?
Did you see him here, Drew?
No.
Oh, I thought you said he was here.
No. Oh, I don't know. No, I didn't see him.
Okay.
I thought you said he was here too.
I didn't even open my mouth. I did not!
For some time.
She said, isn't he the current, and I said, he has been for some time.
He's been the current tree ward, pretty sure.
Sometimes, not that he's here.
Not, he hasn't been here for some time.
He answered my question.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
We reappoint John Manchester, who isn't here presently, as tree warden for his annual reappointment.
Second.
We have a motion second. Anything from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Madam Clerk, you'll notify him?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nancy, did you put on unfinished business, the bridge information?
Mr. Roderick's aware of it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What are you doing, all right?
Don't sit yet. I would entertain a motion to under unfinished business to discuss the Pond Street Bridge.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion second. Mr. Berlucci, would you tell us what's going on with the Pond Street Bridge?
Yes. Last Friday, we got some information, Denise Research, the funding availability. A couple of issues came up. One, under their requirements, we have, currently have the ability and authority to borrow the amount of $125,000. She did not feel she had the authority under that $500,000 appropriation that's given her to borrow funds to keep the, you know, so she did not feel that that gave the town authority. But the real second issue is, as she looked at the loan, there's a 1% origination fee, there's a half a percent annual service fee, and they've rated us a triple B because we haven't had a bond rating lately. So when you add up the interest rates they're going to charge us for the loan with all of these fees, she thinks we can get a better deal just going by ourselves and not even wasting our time.
Okay.
That's the financial side. Friday, I also met with a structural engineer from a consulting firm. He came down and looked at the bridge with me. We found out that the bridge currently isn't posted, but when the RITOD did all the math and all the inspection and all the results, the result of that calculation came out a failure and it was going to be posted. But it was so close to that line of posting or not posting, they did what we call a load test. They go up there with a very heavy load and they measured the deflection of the bridge, how much it goes down when it's loaded. And that load test just about passed. So we didn't get whacked with a posting. But the bridge is in now critical condition. It's in worse case than I thought, you know, with the original report, they didn't get into this load testing and all of that. I just had a report that said it wasn't posted. So what I'm recommending is that we're going to have to take care of this bridge or it's going to be posted or closed.
When you mean posted, what does the posting say?
I'm talking about instead of 20 ton loads, they could restrict it to six, eight, 10, or down to a pickup truck. Or totally close it. So what I'm recommending is, under this year's budget, we appropriate some funds to hire a design consultant firm to come up with a design, to design a rehab or whatever has to be done. And then fund that repair in the next year's budget, because I think we've got a year, year and a half out of this. But it would be posted in the meantime. This is common. There's a lot of bridges around the state. Fortunately, we have one. In fact, we only have one bridge. So that's what I'm recommending. This all came about Friday. I didn't know any of this until, like I said, we got on reading and we found out the financing and all that, so.
What do we estimate this to cost?
Big time?
What do we estimate this to cost? Is it just that $120,000?
Well, that's it. I'm working with this design consultant that came down, strictly as a favorite, and we're going to go over those numbers again based on the new information in that file. Basically, it's ready to be posted. And, you know, there's really no temporary action you can take to relieve that posting. You just have to rebuild the bridge.
Do we have any ball, are we talking hundreds, $100,000 or are we talking 500?
I ended up estimating it at 125. I'm not confident, super confident of that estimate now, but it's not going to go to a million.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to ballpark how much we're, okay.
Like that, you know? But I'll have that number later and I'll try to give you a number for what I would think it would cost to log to a request proposal for a consultant.
Steve, what is the average weight load that goes over that bridge? I mean, do 20 tons normally go over that bridge?
I would say, yeah, we've got the big potato farms in Carrington.
When it's harvest season.
All the potting needs. That's the basic bottom limit that all estates, all bridges are required to carry or to get reduction in. That's the basic. So I don't know the weight of them all going over. I know we just put a blanket permit on in which cement trucks kind of have a permit to go back and forth. They don't get an individual one. We took that off because they, that permit can't be given out anymore. They're a little bit overweight, but allowed to be. We've stopped that and next, we're in critical condition with this bridge.
Is there any administrative procedure, like, I'm sorry, notifying the large users of that bridge in the meantime to say, you know, if you can, maybe try to go some, a different route? One every?
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that till it's posted.
Okay, okay.
We may get another year, two years, you know, they're going to be inspecting it every single, every six months now where it's reached this critical level and we're going to get a report.
Okay.
I think we can hold it together till we get the design and we get funding and we can just go.
Okay. All right, anything else from the council? Thanks, Steve. Tony Lynn McGowan, tax collector, request council approval to abate $34,000, $36,089 in motor vehicle and tangible uncollectible from 2002 and 2003 tax years.
Good evening. This is pretty much a matter of housekeeping. These receivables have been on the tax roll since 2002 and 2003 and we've exhausted all collection measures. So they're deemed uncollectible. The reason why there is two years on is at some point in time, we missed a year of annual abatement, so we're trying to catch up. And from here on out, it would be one year at a time, 10 years old.
Okay. Anything from the council?
Yeah, I assume on the motor vehicle, we can guess that most of these are probably moved.
Moved out of town and the tangible, a lot of them are businesses that have closed.
Yeah.
Plus, Mr. President, if any of these come back, move back in and it's found, it'll still show on the computer, they add that person back in. You can add them back to the tax roll on an individual basis like that. So we don't just let it slip through. They do sometimes catch them and go back.
Good. Okay, anything from the council?
Just real quick, is this figure, I know it's for two years, but if you look at, average it out over those two years, is that about what we see on an annual basis?
Exactly.
It's not like it's highly inflated this time around?
No.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to abate $34,000, $36,089 in motor vehicle and tangible uncollectible taxes from the years 2002 and 2003.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tony Lynn.
Thanks very much.
New business. Chief Blakey requests council approval of in-street pedestrian crossing sign on Main Road in the area of Coastal Roasters Coffee Shop.
Mr. President, the crosswalk has been approved by the state. It is a state road along with the sign, the signage on the side approaching the intersection. There's a request made by a citizen for an in-street sign. And I voted Mr. Tights the legalities of it, the application. It states the council, the municipality, excuse me, is responsible for all costs, including removing the sign during inclement weather, keeping the upgrade of the sign, and I guess any responsibility should someone strike the sign. I'm assuming that. So I did give the application, Mr. Tights, to look it over and see what the council's pleasure was. I didn't think I had the authority to make that call.
Okay. I have a question for you, Chief. Is it one of those orange ones that says to yield?
Some, they actually have a picture. You can pick the color. I actually looked at a green one and I looked at some yellow.
I don't have a picture.
Maroon, gold and white.
They have a green one and, it's a big sign.
Yep.
The cost is approximately $220, $199 to $220. Remotated in the asphalt, in the crosswalk.
In the center of the lanes, then the kind of bouncy ones in case you hit it, yeah.
The town meets the criteria because it's a 25 mile an hour posted speed area. There isn't all, it is dangerous, there's no question about the fact, it's a dangerous intersection. I had spoken with Mr. Berlucci about maintaining the sign, taking the sign out during inclement weather. Speaking for you, Steve, he didn't seem to, he didn't have any objection to that. But again, there's a legality and the responsibility of municipality for potential damages, I would say, if something should hit it or something. I don't, I mean, crosswalks do have the right, people in crosswalk do have a right of way.
Okay. All right, anything from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request of an in-street pedestrian crossing sign on Main Road in the area of Coastal Roasters Coffee Shop.
Second.
With the caveat that the DPW will remove it in the event of storms.
With the understanding that Department of Public Works will maintain it and remove it during inclement weather.
Second.
Mr. Roderick, can I ask a question?
Very quickly.
Does this pedestrian crossing sign carry the same meaning and fines as a crosswalk?
Absolutely.
It's going to be in a crosswalk.
It's in a crosswalk.
It'll be in the crosswalk.
Well, it won't be a crosswalk yet.
The signage is going to be put up as soon as possible. Actually, this was approved twice, once in 2005 and once last year. They hadn't put it in, but the, I was informed by the traffic commission that they were going to put the signage in soon and as soon as the weather broke, they would paint the crosswalk. There was some question in the past about the sidewalk, the crosswalk had to go from sidewalk to sidewalk. I also spoke with the owner of the business, Coastal Roasters, and informed that she's going to lose two parking places, one on each side of the street.
On each side of the street.
Yeah, because, where the crosswalk is going to be.
Where is this crosswalk going to be? Now I'm confused.
Going over to Coastal Roasters.
Okay.
Where is the location of Coastal Roasters?
On the street.
Location would be chief?
So on both sides.
Would be at the building?
It'll be in the proximity, but there are curb cuts there now, one foot removed in there, dumpster, and there's another curb cut south of that approximately a car length and a half. So I think they're going to try to use the first curb cut, not near the dumpster, but the ones further south.
The other question that I have is...
I said one question. The legalities have already been taken care of.
I'm just bringing up the question is, will this obligate Tiverton to put in a crosswalk to other businesses that are in violation of town zoning requirements that require parking spaces for a business to operate?
Part of the, Mr. President, part of the criteria is the 25 mile an hour speed limit. I don't know of any area, too many areas that would qualify into that, that specific requirement.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, we're not, we're not putting a crosswalk.
The state is putting a crosswalk.
We're just putting the sign.
We're just putting a sign up. Responsibilities for the sign.
Right.
That's all we're doing.
Okay. And who is, we have to physically fill this out, who is going to be doing that? Are we going to be taking care of that? Somebody's taking care of that?
Well, I didn't sign my name to it. I will, but I mean, I want the council to...
I just want to make sure somebody's taking care of this.
That's right. I mean, I'm assuming that, well, not assuming, I'm determining that Nancy Mello will sign as interim town administrator pursuant to the vote of the town council just a few minutes ago.
Which hasn't happened.
Well, when you went, in a few minutes.
In a few minutes.
The document is pretty straightforward as far as the responsibility. We're responsible for everything, that's the thing, we're responsible for this little Stein. If we want it, it's okay, but we're going to be responsible for it, including if someone hits it and claims damage to their car or something like that, we're saying that we're responsible for it.
That won't be a cod blanch and you hit the sign, you're going to be paid out either.
No, right. We have to prove that there was something...
Failure to maintain...
...proper speed or they just take it to the right etc.
I'd prefer someone hit a plastic sign than a person.
Or sign, any kind.
Is there any other places on Main Road that we need similar type solution?
I think that they have to be surveyed for the need, plus the 25 mile an hour speed limit is specific.
Is this program specifically, I'm sorry, is this program only citizen petitions or is this kind of, I know it's hard to get roads striped and crosswalks installed and signage on state roads. Is this something that holds more weight when a citizen petitions for a particular area of town?
No, we, like I said previously, we've been approved for the crosswalk previously. This sign is just an added...
I know, I'm just, that was tangential, I'm sorry, but yeah, okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Intermid Minister, Radar. Approval of advertisement position of town planner.
This has been placed on the agenda. The council has discussed this at our budget workshops for next year. We've discussed what the issue is this year and a person holding on to that position as well as doing other duties. So we've presented just draft of the advertisement and the qualifications, which I believe was raised a few months ago, or maybe this summer, I think.
Yeah.
Because I believe Andy had worked on some of this, but if the council wished to go forward, then we will kind of straighten out anything on these advertisements and...
...and an American Institute of Certified Planners certification is desired. There's no, as far as the job qualifications, there's no future date. That would be something that if you decide to hire someone that doesn't have it, you would presumably negotiate with that with the time that you're deciding to hire them. But it's not, qualification is desired, but not never. I have the same complaints as I did when we talked about this about a year ago. At very least, I think the advertisement should be consistent with the qualification sheet. And at most, I think it should, it should be a little bit more finely crafted. I've always been an opponent of kind of this pigeon, pigeonholing degrees in the areas of study. So that's, you all know what I'm talking about, that's exactly, because I don't want... Yeah, you know what I mean? It says BS or BA in planning, urban design, architecture, public policy, urban studies, are a closely related field, and the advert just says BA in planning. Um, I don't know what a closely related field is. Um, I...
The problem is, yeah, different, different, different schools call their things different. I mean, there are some very good planning degrees, which are basically landscape, architecture degrees technically, because that's what it starts. Others call it urban planning, others call it municipal planning, others just call it planning. So that's, that's the problem.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm erring on the side of, I'm not as concerned, uh, as, I'm not really cons, I'm not really concerned at all with someone who has a master's degree or an advanced degree did when they were writing underground. Um, I think the example I used last time, if you've been planning for thirty years and you have a master's in urban design, I don't care if you've studied English or ballerina for four years, it doesn't really matter if you've been experienced in track or advanced education and, and outlined that. So that's why I think it's more important to me to, to see results based and not just, I have a degree in planning, therefore I should be planning. Uh, because, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that that should be a couple of things.
Yeah. We have to make that, make that clear, though, if that's what we want to say. I mean, I know what our requirements of, our requirements are, you know, from talking about this, but we have to make sure applicants, you know, filling this position, um, are aware that we are, you know, not just, I don't want somebody who's really, could be a good quali, qualified candidate to say, oh, I don't have a, a BA in urban design, I, you know, I studied ancient history in college.
Well, right. I've got a law degree and I'm certified American, certified planner, but my BA is in history.
I'm sorry, you're not, you can't, you can't even apply to this job on your, on your resume. So that's what I'm saying.
We'll fix it.
Okay. That's it. If I want to say... Well, just before he, you, if he asks us anything, I did receive a call regarding this issue, um, the manager, that it was more in terms of probably the posting, and I wasn't at the meeting, um, the budget meeting, probably with the money in the budget. So I really don't know what conversation took place, unfortunately, so I couldn't answer any of the questions, of course, of that. So possibly if we had some kind of statement or at least inform what exactly we're going to be using the town planner for, because we have a lot of big projects, and I, obviously they'll be working on them, so maybe just communicate what we're going to be doing.
Obviously, we have had this discussion regarding the planner because of the issues in town.
Well, right, yes. I'm not, I'm not against this.
No, no, no. So this is not something new, uh, this is something that this council has thought about and felt this town is needed, especially as we go forward now with a big project of Runse's Road, uh, other issues that are coming up in town that, that we need that expertise. And, uh, you know, we feel that it is time that, uh, we move to the twenty-first century.
And hopefully this plan will bring in revenue by, 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 by getting, you know, helping it go forward. Um, I think at least from my perspective, in, both in, I'm sorry, the other word, both in terms of the operations of the department and the, the budget discussion, it is very obvious that the planning department, while it is working at the moment, is leaning disproportionately hard on one individual, and we're not so sure, well, we are sure, we can't continue to go on that way. We have one person doing everything. The administrative officer of the planning board, uh, she's, she's, she is the kind of interim town planner, and she also is her own assistant. It's too much, um, to, to load on one person. She also attends economic development commission meetings. It's, we, and, and what I, this, what I came out of that meeting, uh, with was, I'm less interested in hiring a town planner, and I'm more interested in fully staffing the planning department. Because I think over the past few years and probably over the past five years, our expectations of what a planner or the planning department needs to do have changed slightly, and I think they're more in tune to what, um, we're talking about with economic development. We have the industrial part, we have, um, proposals for, um, turn a crossing, we have chat, and we have these grants that need administration and grants that need applications. Um, it's a lot to, while, while the planning board has been actively trying to address, you know, zoning issues, rewriting particular areas, studying form-based codes, um, there's a lot going on right now, and at least from my perspective, we need, we need a little more help in that department.
Absolutely.
And if we're going to progress into a sustainable commercial base, I think, um, fully staffing that office is, uh, an absolute necessity. So, that's, that's what I got out of that meeting.
You did.
And so...
All this is not against our budget line.
Actually, I'd, I'd like to thank you, all of you, for your efforts that you put into the budget issue. You know, you spent probably five or six weeks, um, working on the budget, and, um, hopefully you've seen a different perspective on the budget. So I want personally to thank you for doing that. Um, the reason I'm here tonight also is I got some phone calls saying, you know, what's going on with this, um, town planner position? And first of all, if we're going to go out and advertise, when is this person going to be on board? It's not determined.
That's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Because it's not in the budget for a planner for last year, which was approved by the town referendum, by the people of the town, who don't vote on that Saturday morning, and they voted for no solicitor, and they voted that budget.
We have a plan.
Sorry.
No planner.
Well, we're working on that one.
I don't understand.
We're working on that one.
But actually, this, this is a policy decision of the council, and the council has the right to advertise based on our policy.
Correct.
We also have within the budget, as a twenty thousand dollars.
Or a consultant.
Right. She could be our planner.
Twenty, the planner?
And, and if need be, this council can take a look at our budget.
Because I would agree with you a hundred percent that we have to move into the twenty-first century. I just think that we're putting in a cod before the horse. It's not been approved by the town. It's, it's in next year's budget, but we haven't even spoken to the people about next year's budget. We haven't spoken to the planning department about next year's budget. So we don't, you know, we get blind, we get blindsided.
But again, Dave, Dave, you have to understand, this is policy, this, this council makes policy.
Right.
And it is our policy that we believe we need this position. We have not set a date, as, as Nancy has told you.
Because you have to fund it also. Have to fund this.
But we, but we need to move forward and find out what we're expecting.
I was told it's in next year's budget, which it is, because I seen the budget, and it is a planner in next year's budget. So there's also a ladder truck, so why don't we go out for our RFP on the ladder?
No, that is a, no, that is not in our group budget.
Well, actually, you were incorrect, it was taken out.
It's not in our budget.
It was taken out. But there are other things that are in there.
But if we really believe we need a planner, and the budget committee says no, then it will be our decision to, to go forward and try to get the people to vote for it. Not that I'm saying that that's what we would do, but, but we believe we need a planner. So if the budget committee decides that they do not want to fund the budget committee, then it's our fault for us to decide what to do from that, that point.
Well, I just think that the process is not timely, that the planning of the planner was not timely. I would agree. Um, I think that this council has been advocating for a planner for over a year, we've been actively talking about it, and we have been actively discussions with you as the, as the budget committee. Um, and that didn't work last year for whatever reason. And so to say putting the cart before the horse, I think, I think is a little disingenuous. You weren't blindsided by the, this, this council's desire to fill a position in the, in the planning department. With all due respect, I, that is, I don't think that is an accurate, uh, you know, assertion. We had two meetings in December, November, September, with the town council, and one with the school committee, and a town council. And we asked what was on your plate, so we could be looking for, for next year. Did this ever come up? No. No, it did not.
It came up last year.
No, no, it did not. And we sat with you in the end of the year, like we said we were, and I know it came up last year, and was highly debated between the budget committee. My feeling is that because it was discussed last year, I, I mean, de facto, if it wasn't, if it wasn't specifically addressed at, at one of our kind of pre-budget process meetings, then perhaps that was a, a technical oversight, but I think just by default, the, the commitment of the council to pursue this sort of role and to build out our planning department, I don't think has diminished whatsoever since, you know, we communicated that pretty clearly last year.
And we talked about it all year long.
So, I, I mean, it could have been a housekeeping oversight.
But, but again, again, Dave, the, the, right now, the policy of this council is to seek a plan, okay? We have not set a definitive date. But again, Dave, we as a, as a council have to look at what we believe is in the best interest of this town. And right now, with all that is going on, and one individual doing all that work, which is an unbelievably burdened work, you know, and, and not to cast any aspirations, okay? But I mean, it's very difficult to give a hundred percent when you're already working two hundred percent. So, again, I, I think this council has been in the past and, and has continued to say that it's a position that we believe we absolutely need to have. All right. Just thank you very much. Thank you, thanks for all your...
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. We have a, uh, I'll entertain a motion without any approval to advertise.
It just works with you. Did, I saw you, uh...
I'm all right about that. What are motions?
I move that we approve, request to, the town, interim administrator's request to proceed with advertising position of full-time town planner. Uh, I don't know, subject to the revisions of, of Solicitor Tights or regarding qualifications. And would you like to add this? Salary requirements must be included in consideration if it is amenable to the rest of the council when we strengthen it. Because then we say, and then we ask for a salary history, we don't need those. If you want a salary history, ask for a salary history, you don't need requirements. You're going to exclude a candidate because it's, you know, it's...
So we have a motion to add, add, add to the...
What do, what is this, what is this hearing?
I, I, I...
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll put on the consent agenda. I know we can put on consent for the eleventh.
Okay, I cover it. Put on the consent agenda for the next meeting. Okay, so we have a motion, second, and it's further discussion. All those in favor? Close. Bids and requests for proposals. Kate Meashaw, Planning Board, requests approval to advertise for RFP planning services for comprehensive community plan update.
Hello.
Hi, Kate.
Um, in November of two thousand thirteen, statewide planning put out a set of interim requirements for the update of the comprehensive community plan. Um, the planning board has voted to pursue those interim requirements, and that way we can go for a ten-year approval instead of a five-year approval. Uh, so based on that, um, we had put together an RFP previously based on the previous requirements, but due to the revisions, um, the RFP was kind of completely rewritten. Um, it was also rewritten with the help of statewide planning, because from what I understand from statewide planning, there are a large number of unhappy communities in the state right now who are not working well with our consultants to tackle this update, and we want to try to avoid some of the problems that are being experienced in other communities. So this is a, a much longer RFP than, than typically we would see for something of this scope, but if we want to make it very detailed with the tasks and the expectations of the consultants for this project, and that, that way there would be no question as to what's expected. And statewide planning thinks that this is a, a reasonable expectation, um, for this project. Basically, the consultant is being tasked with project managing and making sure that everything is done to the requirements of the state and, um, that all the subcommittees are coordinated to complete their tasks. Yes, it, it was kind of a blend of a couple of different RFPs that we'd used previously and then adding in, um, the greater detail regarding the tasks.
I thought it was good, right? I was just going to say, I, I think it does need to be detailed like that because it's not a lot of money, so it really has to be made clear, um, both on the first part to, to get people who will apply, so they know just what they're going to have to do for that amount of money, and also make sure... I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the request to advertise for RFP planning services for the comprehensive community plan update, not to exceed ten thousand dollars, um, and, encompassing the, um, scope of work as outlined in handout item H1.
Okay. We have motion, second, all those in favor, carries. Thank you, Kate. Dave Roberts, taxes, has a request approval to advertise RFP for revaluation services.
Good evening, Town Council. Uh, yes, this is the request to do a statistical, statistical update, which follows our last full revaluation of two years ago. By state statute, required to do a revaluation once every three years. Um, so I am requesting, uh, that I go out to RFP for this revaluation. Uh, I'm having a conversation with... Uh I having a conversation with Andy though, uh Andy would like to uh review this. So I'm like, guess I'm looking for a contingent approval uh once Andy approves it. Uh however, just to let you know, uh for all intents and purposes, this is exactly the same RFP that went out six years ago, uh with changes only in the project as far as all the legal wording terminology. It's basically exactly the same, so it really should happen in the show. And just to let you know that the anticipated cost of this update is gonna be around a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We are budgeting on a yearly basis uh fifty-three to cover these updates in the next four week out. And since this is an update, the state does cover sixty percent of this. All right, um any questions about Dave?
I just have one. Uh is it probably keep keep going quickly. The in the qualifications of personnel in India, I'm talking to your man, there's uh seven, seven.
Page.
The qualification for project manager, supervisor, reviewers and appraisers for commercial and industrial, uh the licensing uh terminology is Rhode Island certified general appraiser. That's just a kind of clerical thing, but it's an important distinction, not Rhode Island general appraiser. The level of licensing for what you're looking for is called certified general appraisal licenses.
Correct.
It's page seven under uh I qualifications of personnel appears first in project manager, supervisor heading and then reviewers and appraiser under the commercial and industrial review. I'm not sure if it's anywhere else, but.
That is the only question. That is the only question.
Okay, good. Just to clarify that the right licenses are. It's called certified general appraisal licenses. That's the big. About the licensing. All right, then I will entertain a motion. I move that we approve the request to to advertise um an RFP for re- revaluation services, the statistical re-balance meeting. Subject to the, sorry, subject to the this burden. Yeah. And any review. Sorry.
Okay, we have motion on second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Town administrator, item announcements.
Well, mostly we're gonna need to use some scheduling for budget workshop and for um interview something to our management. And I have one other item and that is unless council has any objection to it, I don't think it's not a worry yet, but if I be asking them to do it in a maybe. For a ad hoc committee and it's to review policy and procedure for the zoning issues. This stems from the meeting that we had about two years ago and I've discussed with a couple of people, Kate, we need to get that committee, uh which I'm gonna be asking you to set up another agenda unless council has objections to it. Just.
No, no. Nancy, that was the stuff coming out in the high school a couple of years back, that that session.
Right, and there was a meeting we had with um with the candidates off the season season.
Yeah. Yeah, season. Okay.
That came up with a summary and also it'll be kinda their mission to review all that and see what some of the issues are that seem to be consistent. So, but yeah, I've got that ad hoc committee that was included. It's been different since I've been interested. Do you want to schedule a.
Uh yes. Uh budget workshop. Uh I have the next. I have again, uh my daughter nineteen twelve is a junior student, I have to.
Is that a big.
Yep. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go.
I I I should I should be. If it's nine to tomorrow. Yeah, I think so.
So restricted to that amount?
Yeah, I'm restricting it. And.
We should have this for eight, I think we're getting a meeting. Monday through Tuesday.
Monday up to two.
Eighty-two days, too nice.
Yeah, uh Monday. The third. I'm gonna mail one is three. Um.
It's kinda short. Yeah, kinda.
I'm gonna mail one is three. Uh.
Um I sh- I should be, I I can't do the fourth, the fourth is not not that we're talking the fourth, but if that does come up, I can't do the fourth.
Yes.
Don't they hear?
Um unless there are requirements. So um unless there's some overriding reason, that's.
Now their names would wouldn't their names be um public once Nancy contacts them and they agree?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, once they agree.
It's not till that.
I agree if they want to.
Well, not till that.
Change my mind and not do the thing with the monarchy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Once they agree.
Once they agree, okay.
Um so.
There are.
Just 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 today.
Their name and the city president.
Right. Okay, so uh seven o'clock.
Monday the third, February third at seven o'clock.
Third, seven o'clock. Let's schedule an hour.
Two, one for seven, one for eight.
Yeah. And then um.
We do seven, eight thirty or seven, eight fifty, give us a little bit of flexibility.
But what.
Yeah, yeah. A few minutes in between.
'Cause last time it was.
We're not gonna do it now.
Seven and eight thirty.
And the personnel board did kinda run, it wasn't how how.
Yeah. Uh what we did in the hour.
Time to have a talk.
We need two others.
So the one other I.
I know, to interview two other candidates.
The fifth, fifth is good for me.
Fifth is wild.
Wait a minute, oh, uh there's something zoning board of appeals is here, I think, yes.
Could we go down the community?
Zoning board of appeals is here. No, they advertised, that's those advertised areas.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
A week we could go to senior center, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Wanna do that for that one?
Why don't we do this?
Do you want?
Why don't we do this for both?
For both, that that senior center?
Yeah, yeah, we do. We do it here, we do it here. There it is.
Okay, so that's Wednesday, February fifth. Nancy thinks seven and eight thirty.
Okay.
Is that it? I just um regarding the budget, I just wanna remind everybody, I guess out in TV land, that the budget committee meets um every Thursday at seven o'clock. They are welcoming um community input. This week they're gonna be talking about code enforcement, planning department review with these budgets, pla- uh the planning board, zoning official debt service and treasurer. Next week, because I won't be able to to say this next Monday, they'll be doing the town clerk's office, order canvases, municipal court, probate court, financial town referendum, economic development, town sergeant, tax assessor, reevaluation account restricted and tax collector and tax sale. They, if anyone has anything to say about these subjects, I would just like to come and participate. The budget committee welcomes your participation.
Okay. Council announcements, comments and questions, discussion of municipal budget, FY twenty fourteen fifteen. Uh obviously we're meeting not exactly, so we will be uh taking another swing at the budget. Um so hopefully uh we can get it to where we would like it to be.
At least tweak it.
At least tweak it again and um again, I'm sure we will look at it a few more times before the final day to the budget meeting. Uh and again, I want to thank this council for those who've been around a long time and those who are new. Uh this council spent a lot of time on this budget that previous councils have never done. So I wanna thank you all for that, so be prepared and bring your pencils on the Saturday. Council Lambeth.
The announcement reads as follows, a request interim administrator and town treasurer with assistance from town auditor, determine an appropriate percentage under charter section three ten for unreserved general fund. I'll try to keep my my remarks brief. Those of you who were here a couple of weeks ago may recall that when the annual financial report was presented by our treasurer, Mrs. Redd and the town auditor, Mr. Dancerow, there was also a brief discussion about section three ten of our charter. And uh the provision is very brief, I'll read it. A quote, no money shall be taken, withdrawn or obligated from the unreserved general fund if such withdrawal would cause said fund to fall below three percent of the current operating budget. This restriction may be suspended on a case basis by an affirmative vote of four-fifths of the town council in order to address a declared state of emergency as enacted by the town council. Uh you may also recall that we were advised at that time that the unreserved general fund had reached approximately five point thirty-five percent. So we're clearly in compliance with section three ten of the charter. Uh but there was also a question uh raised primarily by Mr. Dancerow that there was an issue as to what the appropriate percentage should be under section three ten. And there was some indication by by Mr. Dancerow, and he he used some numbers, that the appropriate percentage under three ten or at least a an appropriate percentage for an unreserved general fund might be something in the range of seven percent. Uh I qualify that because after reviewing this very briefly, I believe that at this point we should give some consideration to two percentage amounts for our unreserved general fund. By that I mean number one, there is a mandated charter provision and that charter provision, as I just read, now reads at three percent. But secondly, there's also an unreserved general fund percentage set rather somewhat informally, more informally, by the town council. Uh and that obviously is any amount in excess of a three percent. That's how we've arrived at the percentage of five point thirty-five percent. We also have, and I think this is again something we have to consider in coming up with the right percentages, that the criteria is different uh in using these two sets of funds depending on what the percentages. And this is what I mean, under section three ten, the criteria for a mandated three percent unreserved general fund is a four-fifth vote by the town council only after declaring quote unquote a state of emergency. And there is actually a definition in our charter as to what a state of emergency.